Okay, Kyle, I think we are still live streaming, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Great, okay, so I see Greg, I see Andy. There's Christina. There's Kathy. Jane and John. Have you heard from John? There's John, good. And Jane. Kyle, have you heard from Jane?
I have not heard from Jane.
I just got a note from Jane that she's having trouble.
I will attempt to make contact with her and see what the problem might be.
Great, thank you. While we're waiting, I would just like everyone to know, apologize for our tardiness. We had some, had some technical difficulties this evening, so. Trying to play a little bit of catch-up here, so everyone can hang with us for a few minutes. Apologies for the tardiness, but we hope we start as soon as we can get our last council member in. There she is, great. Okay. We'll reconvene the Monday, September 14th, 2020, Dublin City Council meeting. Good evening and welcome. In these extraordinary times, we are attempting to be flexible and safe in meeting in this format. We are grateful for the opportunity to do so, which the legislature, legislature has passed for our benefit. This is live stream on Facebook and on the city's website. In order to submit any questions during the meeting, please use the forum under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to us by our Director of Communications and Public Information during the meeting. Our goal is to accommodate public participation and public comment to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on public business. We do ask that you refrain from any inappropriate comments. As, as are indicated by our tardiness, this is not a perfect system, but we are doing our best in these difficult times. And we certainly do appreciate your patience. With that, our local veteran here, Homer Rogers, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Homer. Okay, we do have a special presentation this evening, Dublin Hospitality Industry Update. I believe we have the Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Scott Dring, and Dr. David Lee, the Board President for the Convention and Visitors Bureau with us this evening. And with that, I see Dr. Lee's name up here. Oh, there's Scott, great, so please, Scott, take it away.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Lee, you want to jump in there, you want, you with us? There he goes.
Yep, I'm here, sorry about that, having some technical difficulties. Good evening, and I just want to take a moment to first thank City Council and city leadership under Dana on behalf of the board for the great leadership during these unprecedented times of the pandemic. As a Dublin resident and parent, just want to say thank you. Also want to thank City Council for the support and confidence and trust in the DCVB to help lead the efforts during this time. As you know, these are unprecedented times and you're getting Scott's weekly reports. But just really impressed with the amount of passion and work on quality of work that Scott and his staff are doing to promote safety and wellness and to help the city. So with that, I want to give it to Scott, thank you.
Thank you all, let's get right to it if you don't mind, let me go ahead and share this with you. All right, I want to give you a little bit kind of an update on where we stand in the hospitality industry. When I talk about the hospitality industry, I'm talking about hotels, restaurants, attractions and such. You can kind of see in the national level, I mean, I can't imagine any industry being hit harder during this pandemic than the hospitality industry. You can kind of see the numbers there, $505 billion lost to the economy, $2 billion a day. 8.2 million jobs have been lost, it's interesting, during this pandemic, only 33% of Americans have traveled compared to 79% last year. Many experts believe we won't see recovery until 24. And I was actually on a call this morning that said, right now, there have been 105,000 restaurants that have gone out of business since the pandemic started. Here in Dublin, kind of localized, it's 70% of our jobs have been lost or furloughed. Some of those jobs have come back, some have not. Our hotels are bare bones right now, 60% of the employees are unemployed currently. A lot of these are Dublin residents, as you can imagine. And the Ohio Restaurant Association tells us that 53% of Ohio restaurants won't survive beyond 2000 in their current state with all the restrictions that we're at right now. Bed tax has decreased 67% since the pandemic started. We're projecting that overall annually, when the year's done, it will be down about 60%. And that's, that's including January and February, which were actually pretty good years, or pretty good months. You know, when, what does 21 look like, it's hard to tell. You know, I think obviously corporate travel is our bread and butter here in the city of Dublin. That's nonexistent right now. Many, we're talking Cardinal, Ohio Health, Nationwide, et cetera, Honda, all the time. No one knows when it'll start, some say Q1, some say Q2, next year. Hopefully it's in that timeframe, but until that comes back, until they start traveling again, it's really going to be more of the same. If you kind of look at the chart here, this is, these are weekly Dublin hotel occupancy rates. I guess I brought this up just to kind of show you what a roller coaster it's been, starting in March when it started. In July, you see those two peak months of 59% and 58%. Those were during the PGA tournaments. We actually had a couple softball and baseball tournaments in town as well. I think it's leveled off for the most part, you know, it's kind of hit the right spot. I think we're going to probably see, if you had to ask now, let's say high 30s, low 40s, the rest of the year in terms of occupancy rates. If you look at where we've been compared to last year, this is a little depressing because I remember sitting here last year this time, saying we're hitting record numbers of occupancy rates in our hotels. And, and, and look where we are now, maybe it's particularly low. You look at the jump of the decrease there, that's a 56% point decrease from the previous year. But yeah, I think we're at, what, 84, 46 now, 38% drop compared to, to last year. I thought, you know, kind of give you some comparison numbers on where some of the worst-hit cities are for this. Hawaii, obviously, non-existent by now, in fact, they're not, they've pretty much closed the state for visitors. Orlando, New York, San Francisco, all being hit hard. Orlando and New York, and they have over, I think, 110,000 hotel rooms. So we're talking massive numbers of, of empty hotel rooms that are going on right now. You know, thank you, as Dr. Lee mentioned in the Echo House box, you know, thank you again for your confidence you gave us last April with the restart plan and the monies to support the industry. I'm not going to go through each of these initiatives, you have the memo that we sent you. And, and I know how anxiously you always await my, my Friday emails with the updates as well. But a couple of highlights, I think there's two things we've really focused on during this restart effort in this timeframe. Is one is safety, and that we continue to do that ongoing. And another is to try to start the economy going, keep it going as best we can. With safety perspective, a couple of highlights, the Dublin Safe website is a site that we created. There's a major source of safety and health information that all industry users and others as well. The Sidewalk Decal Program is something that's been very popular recently. We, we did that really focusing in reinforcing social distancing for people walking around downtown Dublin. We highlighted the Royal Tournament, the Irish Festival, we're up to the Dublin Arts Council on, on including local artists. And we'll continue that through the fall as well. And the Mask of Dublin campaign is something that's been very popular as well, just to reinforce everyone with that initiative as well. The economy, you know, we've tried the best we can to generate business for our industry in a very safe and a very responsible manner. You know, the Bureau maintains Dublin's only up-to-minute resource on what retail and restaurants are open for dining. We update that daily, so that's a resource. The Co-op program has been a great success. We've helped 36 local Dublin businesses, most of them small businesses, with our Co-op program. And that's giving them free marketing expertise and promotion and local media. And to really provide them a boost when they need it the most. The Picnic Packs campaign was very successful generating business for restaurants. And we're working on a winter campaign as well. And then finally, statewide leisure campaign, that was probably a large portion of the expenditure you provided us. We had that done, ready to roll, created, and we're going to launch it this summer. And all our metrics, all our research told us people who weren't traveling, our residents didn't want, weren't comfortable with visitors coming in our, our town. So we kind of put that in our back pocket, but it's ready to roll. I mean, we hope it's in the spring, maybe it's in the summer. I'm going to work with Dana and all of you to make sure everyone's comfortable on when we actually launch that campaign. The final thing I wanted to kind of mention is how we are evolving organizations to better serve the community. I think travel and tourism, I think you would all agree, is never going to be the same after COVID. We'll travel differently, safety issues will be different, and in the forefront, we'll select our business travel destinations, leisure travel destinations differently. And we'll market and sell Dublin differently as well. You know, those CDVs, those destinations, marketing organizations like ours that don't adapt and don't evolve are going to fall behind. And I think with our leadership, with Dr. Lee's leadership, our board, a lot of smart, bright people on our board have really taken a proactive initiative to evolve the organization. And not only position us to succeed in the future, but really enable us to better serve the Dublin community. And I think the primary goal when we went through this process was to continue to ask ourselves, how can we best serve the Dublin community? And I think while we're doing this, you know, we started this initiative pre-COVID, but it's fair to say that it was expedited because of COVID. So it isn't something that was there as a result of this, it's something that was kind of on our radar initially. We think we're in a position that we really need to expand our services and market post-COVID, evolve to better serve the community. And then look at, at our funding model. You know, I think we're a little bit handcuffed in many ways, being a 501(c)(6) organization. You know, we're unable to receive endowments, corporate grants. Businesses that wanted to give us money are donating money to us, they can't use their taxes that have tax deductible. And another great example of the challenges, the CARES Act. You know, we were not even eligible for PPP money from the government, you know, 501(c)(6). So it's an obstacle, but as always, we thank you for your 35% that you allow. We're also bed tax, that allows us to reinvest in the community and generate that return on investment that is so important. So quickly, here are the two additional focus areas. And I think that the thing that I want to point out, and I think that Dr. Lee would agree, is we're not changing the organization. You know, we're evolving it, we're evolving and expanding our services and skills. What we've done, we've done very well, our core marketing and sales efforts will continue, we're not sacrificing those at all. But we believe we can evolve the organization and help the community in these two ways, in downtown Dublin and beyond heads and beds. You know, downtown Dublin, you know, six years ago or so, we created Downtown Dublin Strategic Alliance. We used our funds to create a marketing plan, event strategy, cooperative opportunities. And I can say it's been a great success. We've brought many organizations together that had weren't talking before. Everyone involved is doing a fantastic job, thanks to Dana, Allison, Sue, for their support and their involvement with the city. But we believe we can and we need to do better. With the final pieces being completed next year in downtown Dublin, we believe there's a need for one entity that has the best interest of downtown Dublin as a whole, from a marketing and sales perspective. And let me say that again, from a marketing and sales perspective. There's a lot, going to be a lot of balls in the air, it will take, you know, we'll take the lead and make sure we leverage all these different efforts for the overall good of downtown Dublin. These efforts are obviously going to generate jobs, economic impact. We'll develop marketing strategies and messaging, working with everyone together, creating tactics. Local campaigns, you know, the city and staff, your staff is going to have their hands full, obviously, with Riverside, Caustic Park coming online, the programming of that. If that happens, that's going to be a lot of work as well. We're committed to be the liaison down here for staff with those efforts and anything we can do to help along those lines. And then, you know, I know it's hard to imagine right now, but we're going to have events again down the road. And they're going to be great events, they're going to generate revenue, they're going to create jobs, they're going to bring people to the area. We'll scale in and maybe help and definitely help with those different areas, make sure HDBA and Crawford, Wayne City. We're kind of leaving liaison, making sure they have met calendars full and working along with all those partners as well. And then finally, what we're saying beyond heads and beds, you know, our focus has been and always will be attracting out-of-town visitors to our community. And the revenue they generate, we've traditionally targeted in markets that are 155, 150 miles away from the city of Dublin. But I think in the last six months have shown us how successfully we've been able to adapt our skills and to market and sell Dublin to the central Ohio region. That don't necessarily include overnight stays. And the results have been pretty undeniable, as seen in the restart plans. So what we're doing is we're evolving our efforts and expanding our markets beyond just overnight hotel stays. Offensives is head and beds, hence why we're saying beyond heads and beds. We were close to with the hotel community on this. I mean, as you can imagine, you might think, you know, what do they think of this process? They all are for it 100%, they think it's essential for us to have a desirable location, destination for them to attract out-of-town visitors. And again, we're not sacrificing in any way what we're already doing for hotels in terms of generating overnight stays. And I think it's also important to note that this is not just a downtown Dublin effort, this component. This is an effort to market the entire city and its hospitality industry to the entire central Ohio market. Another evolution that will probably be the most visible is a name change. Starting October 1st, the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau will become Visit Dublin. It's a bold change and one that makes us much more marketable. After 32 years, some may say there's some equity in the name, but Convention and Visitors Bureau is not really relevant anymore to what we do. It doesn't properly represent who we are as an organization, who we aspire to be in the future. Visit Dublin speaks more to who we are and who we want to be. You know, it's always, we always do tremendous amount of research and testing before making any kind of jump like this. Last year, we actually transitioned all our social media channels to Visit Dublin. For example, we changed our website from Irish as an ad to Visit Dublin, Ohio. We saw an 81% increase in visits. In Facebook, we changed from Dublin, Ohio CDB to Visit Dublin, saw a 228% increase. And Instagram, we changed from at Irish as an ad to Visit Dublin and saw a 59% increase. So I think kind of, kind of finally, to kind of wrap it up, you know, I'd say that we're going to come out of this. I mean, I'm an optimist and I know we will. I know it's cliche, but I think we will come through this as a better industry once we get past COVID. You know, travel's going to be safer than ever before in our industry, standards in our restaurants and hotels will reach new levels. There's a tremendous amount of pent-up demand to travel. We all appreciate, we'll appreciate traveling more, we'll want to enjoy new travel experiences. There'll be more domestic travel, I don't think a lot of people are going to be doing international travel in the short term. That's going to help our efforts. And I think there's going to be a lot more innovations as well, that'll make, you know, our experience is that much more enjoyable. I think the No Touch technologies we're already seeing, I don't know if you've been to Cameron Mitchell over the last couple of weeks, but they just launched their Up and Go technology, where you can actually pay a bill from your phone at your table without even exchanging money in person. So, you know, again, Dublin has done a remarkable job sustaining its pre-COVID momentum that all of you helped create. And our hospitality has to rebound, rebound that quickly. Even though corporate travel will turn last, I think we've got a tremendous product and a diverse marketing strategy to attract other visitors, to make up for that portion of those losses. Visit Dublin's positioned and ready to succeed in the current environment and post-COVID world. We're excited to continue our collaboration with all of you and Dana and the city of Dublin. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks Scott, questions from council?
You know, Scott, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you because I've seen you downtown a lot, supporting the restaurants. Like, you know, it's, it's a great thing to do or get takeout to help these businesses. And I've run into you down there now a couple of times, so just keep, you know, that's what we need to do, is support these guys that are in a little bit of a hurt and see if we can help them out. So I've seen you there and I appreciate seeing you down there, thank you.
Scott, I, oh. Sorry about that, Kathy, you want to go?
You know, Scott, I, the numbers, and I so appreciate on the Fridays, and I, I read them, I look forward to them on Fridays, Scott. The industry data, I just think that really helps us get a perspective in Dublin and beyond Dublin, so I appreciate that. Do you have a sense of the CARES Act PPP dollars that have flowed into Dublin? Do we have some sort of a sense at that, or are we seeing sort of what the rest of the country is, more or less? Or what's your, do we have data on that, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I don't know if it's broken out by, by city or destination, but I know, you know, a lot of hotels, most of the hotels receive PPP money for sure. I know Crawford Wayne mentioned they received it. So I think, yeah, it's definitely trickled down into the Dublin market. I know, I know Cameron Mitchell, I was on a call with them, and you know, they got a pretty substantial amount. They said they would have had to close 50% of the restaurants if it wasn't for the PPP. So it's definitely helped for sure, our market and the nationwide. I think what we're coming across now is it's kind of a standstill in Washington on the next, you know, the next version of PPP. And, you know, we're trying to get our 501(c)(6), the chamber's in the same boat, they're 501(c)(6). And for whatever reason, oversight or not, you know, we're just not able to get relief on that. But hopefully Washington's going to figure it out and there'll be another kind of version of PPP coming out here in the next few months. Restaurants need it for sure.
Scott, of, of all the different programming, do you get a sense from, especially the restaurants and probably not so much the hotels, it's kind of out of their control? But of the restaurants, is there any particular programming or effort that, that the city has done by allowing outside dining? That's really, that's really lift, helped lift them during this time?
Yeah, I mean, that's been huge. I mean, I think you, with your, all of your leadership, the Dana's leadership, you know, we were one of the first ones. I mean, what Columbus just did two weeks ago, we had what, a two and a half month head start on them. So that's been a lifesaver, not just downtown Dublin, across the entire city to do that. I think the takeout food is something that, you know, we need to continue. I think the challenge we're going to do, you know, Dana and I spoke last week on this, is, you know, when winter months come, outdoor dining is not just going to take a hit. So what do we do to try to make up for that loss of outdoor dining space? So we're working the Ohio Restaurant Association, coming up with some ideas and strategies to help restaurants. And I know Dana, down the road, we'll probably not be able, we're not quite there yet on what that might look like.
Scott, so receiving the PPP is one thing, but receiving the loan forgiveness is the other side of that equation. And I know that several of the banks are just now kicking off their PPP forgiveness application process. Are you, or are you working with the chamber to help provide any resources for advice for the small businesses to ensure that, that they can comply with those rules and to get their forgiveness applications started? Because yes, a second round of PPP would be great, but if they don't get that first round forgiven, you end up having to pay it back.
Yeah, for sure, I know Jamie's doing a great job. I mean, to be honest, that's a little out of our lane. So we've been kind of working with Jamie and supporting her and marching, but we can do, but yeah, they've been doing a fantastic job and I know they're on top of it.
Super, and I, I know that's out of your lane, but I know that people also sometimes come to you guys when the questions really might need to go to the chamber. So it's good to hear that you guys are working together from a communication standpoint, I really appreciate that.
Scott, what more could we be doing to help you?
I think you're doing everything you can. I mean, I think, you know, Dana and staff has been, you know, tremendously successful opening new ideas. Yeah, I think we've been able to kind of weather the storm a little bit. You know, the hotel occupancies, you know, are going to dip into the 30s again. You know, we, I think Megan's on this call, we had a discussion with Megan, you know, a couple of weeks ago about construction business. You know, we're looking at everything, I think, you know, their construction business seems to be good. You know, is there a way that we can incent people that are working on Dublin projects to stay in Dublin hotels? I think that's something we're working with Megan, she's been terrific, terrific help with that. You know, honestly, the only thing that's keeping us afloat right now is leisure travel, construction and weddings. Apparently, people are still getting married during COVID, there have been a tremendous amount of weddings. Not so much the actual events and ceremonies, but people are booking wedding blocks at hotels as well. So, you guys have done a tremendous job, thank you for your leadership, and you know we won't be shy in asking for help.
Scott, can you tell me a little bit how you plan on funding all of these new initiatives?
It's a challenge, yeah, I think we have a lot of smart people on our board, they're looking at different things. I think the private sector, and I think, you know, we've talked before about the model of DMOS and CDVs is so flawed because we are so reliant on one revenue source, and this is worldwide. And it shows you what happens when that one revenue short, source tanks, this is what happens. So, you know, I think we're trying to figure out a model that diversifies the revenue a little bit. I think the private sector is an area that benefits from our efforts. So we're working with them to come up with a partnership model that will generate some revenue as well. We, I shouldn't mention this, but I'm going to anyway, but you know, we've talked about CIDS in the past, but that's way down the road, we're in no position to start the discussion of a CID in the middle of a pandemic. But potentially a CID in downtown area potentially could be something that we could run, that would be a, a small portion revenue as well. So yeah, I think there's, we're a little restricted, but I think the, that's the charge of our board, trying to figure out, you know, how we get this done. And we will, we'll figure it out.
I think for me, that would be the, you know, before I would chime in heavily on the concept, I'd really need to understand how it was going to be funded and what the expectations would be from the city. You know, many of the folks that you're trying to help don't have a lot of wherewithal to, you know, have income to participate in that. And so I, I kind of will withhold a little bit of judgment until we understand a little bit more about the funding. Anything else from council members? Well, that's all. Well, thanks Scott, you always present great information for us and I really always appreciate the level of detail that you provide. So thank you for that, I, I know we all wish it was better news and that it was a little, a little rosier, but I, I believe that we'll get back there and, you know, just really appreciate all that you and your board and the, and the Bureau does of, of taking us to the world. So thanks for what you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that brings us up to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. And I'll ask you first, do you have anything submitted via the clerk's office for items not on this evening's agenda? And I'll ask you first, do you have anything submitted via the clerk's office for items not on this evening's agenda?
Right. We do not.
Thank you. And there's Sue magically appears. Do you have any comments submitted to the website for non-agenda items?
Yes, I do have a comment that I will read to Mayor and Council. This comment came from Peggy Kilty at 7568 Ashlard Court in Dublin. And her subject is response to the September 9th, 2020 Community Task Force meeting. Thank you Mayor Amros Grooms, City Council, City Manager McDaniel, and all participants of the Dublin Community Task Force for taking on the challenging work of combating social injustices, inequities and discrimination. As a parent of an LGBTQ plus teenager and as a wife of a Latino, I view City Resolution 4120 as essential, if not a long overdue effort to bring diverse voices to the table and unify the city through inclusive community meetings and potentially through public policy change. My husband Ken is a graduate of Dublin High School and our family of four has resided in Dublin since 2017. The topics addressed in your meeting are near and dear to my heart. I am a former teacher of Spanish Language, Literature and Culture, Ohio State, a former volunteer, Spanish Language Medical Interpreter, Community Outreach Clinics, and former Clinical Instructor of Health Information Management and Systems. Can I pause for one moment? I have a little dog that is squeaking. I apologize for that. It's one of the other technical difficulties that we can experience on a Zoom call. All right, I will continue. My current role as a stay-at-home mom is my most challenging today and requires I help my children understand the state of the world where they reside. That world stretches beyond the Dublin city limits and this community is not immune to what occurs outside of our city borders. Listening to all the diverse voices present for the September 9th, 2020 meeting, I am encouraged. I appreciate the outpouring of ideas shared by task force members. Many have been thoughtful, especially those that factor cultural differences in language, literacy and communication methods to ensure inclusivity. I also applaud the attention given to making this a data-driven effort with measurable outcomes. I have several thoughts on the topics this task force is addressing. And task force member Danisha Franklin wanted to know what is that upsets people? I welcome the opportunity to share with you what upsets me and some of my concerns here. Number one, engaging youth. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to participate in a community liaison officer meeting with Dublin Police, city officials and community members. There were about 15 of us in a discussion which revolved around public perceptions of the role of police in the aftermath of George Floyd's murder. I surprised myself with the bottled emotions that poured from my shaking voice as I spoke of how my children now view police departments across our nation, state and city. My youngest child wants to know why the police treat black people differently than white people and asked me, why do the police hate black people? While this may not be the scenario in the city of Dublin, we are watching this abuse of power happen live on a national stage. I share this on public record because it needs to be heard by all, not just by a few in a closed meeting. My child cannot be the only child asking such questions. I believe that the CLO meeting was part of the general engagement process that Dana McDaniel referred to as the third leg of the Community Task Force. If that is the case, I hope you will consider opening this general engagement process to youth of all ages in our community. Our children have many thoughts and questions surrounding current events and they deserve not only a voice in this conversation, but also honest answers to their questions. Number two, LGBTQ plus community. When I learned that the city had appointed two new LGBTQ plus liaisons, I immediately reached out to them. My oldest child, a freshman at Coffin High School, identifies as gender non-binary and prefers they/them pronouns. Public and workplace policies will greatly impact their future as a citizen and as an employee wherever they reside. They have already faced discrimination, bullying and even violations of their rights. I have written to the Dublin Board of Education and asked that the LGBTQ plus student population be recognized in the district's own diversity and inclusion efforts. I worry that my request will fall on deaf ears. I worry that my child will continue to face discrimination and bullying at school and in this city simply because of who they are. And I will ask each one of you, does my child's sexual orientation, they are a lesbian and gender identity non-binary, make you uncomfortable? Please be honest. If the answer is yes, please ask yourself why. I urge all task force members to educate themselves on the issues surrounding the LGBTQ plus community and to use the resources provided by organizations such as the Human Rights Campaign, PFLAG and GLSEN have central Ohio chapters. I am not presenting these asks as part of the so-called gay agenda. I am asking in support of my children and all members of the LGBTQ plus community who are striving for equality in all aspects of their lives. Number three, three Dublins. As unintended consequences of the recent redistricting of Dublin city schools was the tri-furbackation of the community into three distinct regions based on high school attendance boundaries. I hope the task force will review the demographics of these three regions, including racial composition, cost of housing and socioeconomic status. The data will tell a story. I will share a story with you about my husband's experience growing up in Dublin schools and that of our youngest child. Ken graduated from Dublin High School in 1993. He grew up on the other side of the river, which in Dublin circa 1990s equated to being from the wrong side of the tracks. He was often mocked for being poor, a label attached to many who lived south of 161 and east of the Scioto River. He did not experience racial bias for being Latino because he looked white, but his mother, a Latina immigrant, now a US citizen, certainly did and still does. Fast forward a few decades, my daughter, a fifth grader at Wyandotte Elementary, for the past three years has participated in a local social group for girls. This group, like our schools, is divided into smaller groups by neighborhood, geographic location. Because my child did not live in a certain neighborhood, she was told by other children that she was too poor to engage with their subgroup. The irony is not lost upon us. My husband and I are very aware of the privileges that come with our zip code and make a concerted effort to keep our kids well-grounded. But the fact that children between first and fifth grade are choosing to be exclusive of others based on perceived social economic status is concerning. Number four, authenticity. I would be remiss if I did not mention my concern regarding the city's intentions with this initiative. I hope the city is pursuing this because it is simply the right thing to do for the entire community. Not as a component of the city's brand, not to check a box on a compliance list, not for bragging rights. No one should be boasting in the year 2020 that they are just now recognizing and tackling the issues of social, racial inequities and discrimination. I hope the task force members and city council will recognize that this is an initiative that is long overdue. I do not state this to offend the city and its efforts. I say this because diversity and inclusion efforts in both corporate and academic settings have failed those which they've been designed to serve. Saying that you are doing something has a vastly different result than actually executing and delivering actionable, measurable change. In this era of renewed social consciousness in which we are living, the fight for civil rights and social justice has finally made its way into our suburban living rooms. Many of us in the white community have failed to recognize the injustices that have for decades, if not centuries, for Black and Native Americans, continue to plague people of color, immigrants, LGBTQ plus communities, and those living in poverty because it may not have affected us personally. Task force members, Iso Shoshi said it perfectly, not everyone in the community believes there is a problem. And that right there poses an enormous challenge this community must overcome in order to move forward together. Thank you for taking the time to read my comments and I look forward to following the work of this community task force and the chief advisory committee. Like this community task force, I would like to see substantial change. But ultimately, as Dana McDaniel said, this is a democracy and it is up to all community members to embrace this effort. I for one am on board.
Great. Thanks Sue. Anything else?
That is all.
Is that the only comment you had?
Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have just one item on our consent agenda. Is there a request or move the item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Sue, do we have any comment on the consent agenda?
No comments.
And Anne, have you received any?
No comments.
Okay. I move to approve the one consent agenda item. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's John.
Thank you, John. Anne, which please call the roll.
Yes, Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Takes us to second reading ordinance 21-20.
Adopting the 2021 to 2025 five-year capital improvements program.
Very good. I believe that Matt Stifler is, has a presentation for us this evening. So welcome, Matt. Please take it away.
Good evening. Thank you, members of council. All right. I am pleased to bring before you today for its second reading and public hearing ordinance 21-20, the 2021 CIP. As has been the case, we start with the schedule. We are nearing the end of this process. Having last had our meeting on September 8th, we had our CIP work session. This presentation today will go over some of the changes that were made at that work session and seek further input on a couple of items that remained outstanding. So a brief summary of some of the discussion and changes that were requested at that work session include regarding the Emerald Campus. The project funding remains unchanged from that in the proposed ordinance, but the project will be renamed to the Emerald Campus Road Improvements, reflecting the multiple solutions to that potential project's need. Regarding the Derby Flex Lot, sample programming will be explored in the upcoming year and this discussion is recommended with the historic Dublin Task Force regarding that space. And as the opportunity or project is clarified with the task force and the sample programming, funding if necessary will be included in the next CIP, the 22 through 26 CIP. Regarding sewer and water extensions, design funding of $140,000 for sewer extensions to areas 1B and 1C is being advanced in another ordinance before you tonight, ordinance 23-20. Sorry about that. Additionally, we have 1.8 million in construction funding for those areas above programmed in 2020. This 1.8 million is to be debt funded from the sewer fund, supported by transfers from the general fund. In addition, construction for area 15 of 43,000 is programmed in 22, again, from the sewer fund, supported with a transfer from the general fund. And finally, design for additional water and sewer extension projects based on the priority listing discussed at the September 8th meeting will be programmed into the CIP and then further supported by transfers from the general fund. These additional transfers from 21 through 25 will total 150 to $265,000 annually. And this extension policy will further be discussed with the Public Services Committee prior to the, the next CIP. Additionally, we had some discussion on the Riverside Crossing Park. There are two projects associated with the Riverside Crossing Park, a continuation of the East and West Plaza and then the Promenade project scheduled for 2025. We discussed breaking that 2025 project up into various components. Several of those components were deemed to be moved forward from 2025 to 2021, including the East Side Boulder Path, the West Side Shared Use Path and West Side Masonry. Projects not moving forward and remaining scheduled in 2025 include the West Side Parking Lot and the East Side Promenade. Projects not yet to be determined include the East Side Parking Lots River Access. And Matt Ehrman will discuss some of the details related to that discussion so that tonight a decision can be made regarding that project.
Good evening, members of council. Just really quickly to summarize what Matt just represented on the previous slide. The projects here that are in green are the ones that are moved to the 2021 year for the capital budget. The ones in red at the bottom are the ones that are pushed out beyond 2025. And then as you'll recall, some of the conversation we had at the workshop, there was questions as to a little bit more clarity on what the west side sidewalks along North River View would entail. So Matt, if you can go to the next slide, I will present those so you can get a better picture as to what that looks like. So what you see here is an outlined area in black on the west side of the river. This is the area where the sidewalk is located in relation to the rest of the park. You can see where the sidewalk would basically connect the West Plaza down to the the lower area along North River View to be able to access the Shared Juice Pass in that part to the east. Matt, if you can go to the next slide, please. What you see here is a blown up diagram of what the vision for these walks will look like. We broke them into three phases for the purpose of, if you want to pick and choose, there are dollar amounts associated with each phase. And also if you want to do all of it in one package, there's a collective number there at the bottom as well of 365,000 is what is proposed in the budget. But basically the walk entails a sidewalk that comes off of the West Plaza along with the retaining wall. As you all are aware, that area there is, the slope of that area is rather extreme without croppings of limestone and it's very barren at the moment. But the vision of this was to put a retaining wall along the walkway there as phase one to go down to the actual North River View Street. Second phase is connecting that towards the north, along River, North River View Street that connects to the other contiguous sidewalk down on the lower end. Then the third phase is what we're looking at as a landscape of that area with trees and shrubs and a gravel path with natural stone seating areas throughout, just kind of giving a sense of exploration that could connect a shorter distance to go from point A to point B. So that is basically what we're looking at in the way of the design for this sidewalk area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Questions, comments from council?
Matt, I have a, I have a question for you. That upper walk and wall, because there's so much natural limestone cliff there sort of that, and, and you're anticipating that would be a retaining wall made with a limestone veneer. Is there, is there any way to, to get a walk through there without having to change so much of that natural limestone wall effect?
That's a good question. We would actually take advantage of those limestone outcroppings and arrange the paths in such a way that it doesn't disturb them. It actually allows you to get down to them.
Okay. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see one dimensionally kind of how that works, but.
It's a difficult map to put together for sure. But the whole idea was to incorporate those outcroppings into that wall. You can imagine with the topography change and the way that those outcroppings exist today, a, a trail on one, on the upper edge winding down to a trail below with the outcroppings in the middle would create a pretty interesting viewpoint with areas to sit and rest and, you know, a niche kind of area.
Yeah, I, I think that's one of the things that I'm thinking about. I mean, I can understand we need to shore up that sidewalk, but some of these beautiful limestone sort of exposed cliffs from the old quarry are worth preserving. sort of exposed cliffs from the old quarry are worth preserving visually as you take that journey down there. So I think that would be a comment that I would like to see considered.
Matt, is this a uniquely independent project? Meaning that there there wouldn't be a cost advantage or disadvantage to do it whenever we wanted to next year, two years from now, three years from now, is that?
It's pretty independent of cost change.
Okay. Okay, other comments? Do I have anything else to add? I would agree with Jane. I think those exposed natural stone outcroppings are really neat and they're lovely. And when we have opportunity to preserve and present those, I think it would be a good opportunity to capture. So probably won't know all of that until you get on site and you start start construction. So, okay, if there are other thoughts, Matt, do you have more for us?
Yes, Mayor.
But the other Matt does. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt Ehrman. Matt Stifler.
Absolutely, Mayor. I don't mind proceeding with this project, but I will need some direction on where council would like this project funded before I move on to a different ordinance entirely, but I'm happy to move through the cash debt discussion, which is which may may help inform that decision or may just be more information to make that decision. So there was also a question asked regarding this project for cash funding versus debt funding this Riverside Crossing Park part project. And I wanted to just note at the top, because I did not yet know the outcome, still don't, of the East Side Parking Lot access discussion. I did include it as moving forward in 21. So if you decide not to, these numbers will improve slightly, but this includes including that project in the 2021 project funding. So the criteria for determining maybe a best way, if there is a best way or a preference at least for debt versus cash funding really come down to the debt policy and the general fund reserve policy. So we'll talk about both of these methodologies of funding from that perspective and the differences of each from the proposed. So if we are to debt finance this project and move it from 2025 to 2021, as compared to the proposed CIP, there will be an increase in design costs of 147,500 funded in cash in 2021. There will also be a net increase in of 96,000 in debt financing costs from 2021 to 2024. Because this project was financed in the proposed beginning in 2025, there's no increase or no change for a majority of this debt's life from 2025 to 2021. There would be a corresponding decrease the last three years of this debt payment to mirror the the increase on the front end. In order to facilitate this increase in cash funded design and debt financed construction costs, the placeholder for the Golf Club of Dublin maintenance building would need to be moved from 2023, where it is in the proposed CIP, to 2024. Looking at our debt profile, there are three colors here. Yellow represents our outstanding principle. The blue represents the principle of the 2025 debt offering and red represents the 2021 principle. So you can see that our debt profile will be impacted slightly in a positive way if we were to, of course, not finance the 2021 offering. Relative to our debt policy, this graph quickly demonstrates, I think, the point that regardless of the decision to cash fund or debt finance, both options are within the compliance of our debt policy. Graphically, compliance with our debt policy means that that line remains between the blue and purple bars, and we can see that in both cases. It's difficult to see from this line what the difference really is because the net debt expense change between the proposed and the debt financing often is only about $360,000 and cash funding it results in about a $440,000 reduction every year for 20 years. So there is a reduction and there is a difference between those red and blue lines. It just doesn't show up very dramatically here. So to perhaps show that in a little bit more fairer fashion, the orange line on this graph represents the net debt expenses in the proposed CIP. Moving those projects forward increases the debt expenses by that $95,000, $96,000 through 2024 to the blue line at the top of the graph. And then cash funding it obviously decreases our net debt expenses by about $440,000 annually, beginning in 2021 and is represented by that red line. So the difference between the red and blue lines on this graph is that $440,000. And I think that's a truer graphical representation of the savings that we would see if we were to choose to cash fund this. If we were to cash fund this, our design costs again increased by the 147,500. That would, of course, be cash financed. Debt finding financing cost as compared to the proposed, as I mentioned, decreased $360,000 per year from 2021 to 2041, and it's a reduction in principal of 4.5 million dollars. There's also an additional decrease of $96,000 from 2025 to 2045, which is a reduction in principal of 1.2 million dollars. That is the part that's being moved forward if that were to be cash funded. There would be a corresponding increase in expenditures and a reduction in fund balance of the general fund by 5.7 million dollars in 2021. So the general fund expenditures in 2020 and 2021 include the following items. It includes about 7.35 million dollars in capital projects already, not including this 5.7 million dollars. It also does not yet include and things that we're going to need to talk about and you'll become more familiar with as we move through the operating budget, but need to be touched upon if we're going to talk about our general fund balance are some additional revenue subsidies that will need to be considered due to the COVID-19 impact. Those additional revenue subsidies are estimated to currently be about 5.9 million dollars. They include some potential additional support to the Recreation Fund of 4 million dollars, the Pool Fund of $400,000 and the Hotel Motel Fund of 1.5 million dollars. Now, I want to be clear mentioning these, since this is the first time council has had these. These will be discussed and debated and decided much more appropriately in the operating budget. But I think it's important that when you're making a decision, you have as much information as I have. And I have that this information is something we need to consider, so I'm bringing it forward for your consideration as well. But we will absolutely spend some more time talking about those revenue subsidies. With regard to cash financing, there are some additional non-policy related concerns that I want to I want to touch on briefly. The obvious one being the pandemic and potential recession. Now, currently, income tax revenues are holding steady, up 2.7% year to date over last year. That is a bright spot and one we're all there very thankful for in the finance office. 2021 income tax estimates are estimated to be 1% above our 2020 estimate. So we are increasing, we are estimating increased growth. The future potential impact of this is, of course, unknown, and there's certainly a possible impact that we haven't felt yet as this pandemic moves forward through its various stages. The other important consideration is the 20-day rule. It was suspended under the emergency conditions as laid out in the executive order. That suspension is likely to be challenged in court decisions that will begin in earnest probably in Q1 of next year when the 2020 taxes have been decided. There's also potential legislative action reversing the notwithstanding of that 20-day provision, although those are less likely to move forward. They have been introduced. The other part of this that's important is that the suspension lasts 30 days after the emergency under the executive order. There is a potential impact after the emergency ends, regardless of how it is treated under the emergency conditions as teleworking could remain after the emergency. My suspicion is that the emergency and teleworking will be well timed to end together in many regards, but perhaps not in all. And we need to be cognizant of that fact that there very well may be an impact after we move past this emergency. So with that, I'd like to move towards a look at the fund balance itself. For 2020, August, the third line from the bottom, that represents our current fund balance. You will see that reflected in the monthly finance report that you'll receive in tomorrow's council packet, and I think is really the genesis for this discussion, which I think is a good one. And that is that it will show that our current general fund balance is 81.6%, well in advance of our 50% fund balance reserve policy. I would estimate that at the end of the year, we will actually have a fund balance of $64 million and general fund expenditures significantly below budget due to the actions that we have taken to reduce our operating expenditures and the changes forthcoming in the third quarter supplemental with regard to capital projects. I'm estimating we'll be closer to 75.3 million, leaving with us a fund balance of about 85.5%. Now, that fund balance will decrease significantly when we look at the 2021 estimate. We're going to see an estimate of $51 million. And I'm estimating currently, and I reserve the right to change this in the next three weeks prior to the introduction of the operating budget. So if that number isn't 85.7, it's because I worked on it for three more weeks, but about 85.7 is the budget that I would give you today, three weeks early for a fund balance estimate of about 59.6%. So how did we go from 64 million to 51 million? What are the decisions that have yet to be made? Many of these have not been made, but you'll be asked to begin considering them tonight. So for instance, there are significant land acquisition costs and CIP costs, and we have seen many of those. So if I could start with the Shire Rings Road realignment, that is currently budgeted for a transfer from the general fund of 6.5 million dollars in 2020. The third quarter supplemental that we'll consider later tonight reduces that transfer and changes it from 2020 to 2020 and 21. So a total of $2 million in 2020 and $4 million in 2021. We also have the sewer extensions that were discussed earlier of 150,000. The third quarter supplemental also puts forward, now I'm back at the top of the chart, $1 million for the Recreation Fund due solely to the revenue decline for the COVID-19 impact as well as an additional $100,000 for the pool fund due to the impact of COVID-19. These these expenditures were not unexpected in the May discussion regarding opening the pool. We had mentioned that the revenues in the recreation program were significantly down and would likely require further subsidization in 2020. I'm also predicting that that subsidization subsidization will continue to occur in 2021. Similarly, for both the Recreation and Pool Fund. I'm putting Q4 supplemental possible and it's there in italics because that money is not budgeted in any of the figures. And I'm not certain at this point whether we'll need it, but I want you to be aware that I'm considering it and that you should have it in your mind too when you make this decision. So I don't want you to feel as though it is a done deal or it isn't a done deal. It's just something that I think we need to be aware of and see how revenues go the remainder of the year, particularly with the Recreation Fund. As Scott mentioned earlier today, hotel motel revenues are down about 60%. If we want to continue normal operations in 2021 for the Hotel Motel Fund, we are going to have to consider subsidizing that fund about 1.5 million dollars in 2021. And again, I think that's a discussion we should take up in earnest during the operating budget, but I want to mention it here because it obviously plays a role. Putting all those together, you end up with a year-end fund balances I displayed earlier of about 51 million dollars on expenditures of 85.7 or that 59.6%. If we were to cash fund this project and reduce the fund balance by that 5.7 million, increase general fund expenditure similarly, we end up with a general fund balance projection of 49.7%. So the concern and evaluation of these two choices under these two policies, debt policy compliance exists under both scenarios and doesn't present a strong basis for making a staff recommendation in either neither direction. Though I acknowledge, as we all probably would, that less debt is preferable to more debt policy compliance aside. The general fund reserve is strong, as you will see in your report tomorrow and as you've been briefed on at 81.6% in August, but significant expenditures remain, and we've detailed those out, those including current capital projects in the CIP and additional revenue subsidies pending council action. I want to be very clear that I don't assume these are done. You certainly have choices and decisions to make regarding these actions. But I just want you to be aware that we will have to make decisions regarding those actions and then the amount specified. So the cash funding may place the city in violation of the general fund balance policy. So with that, staff would recommend debt financing the 5.7 million dollars for Riverside Crossing Park in 2021. But I want to add the following caveat because I think it's important and I think it gives us options and I'd like you to consider it. And that is that as the debt financing will require an additional ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds, the city does not have to make a final decision to cash or debt finance this project until 2021. And I think one of the keys that we will have to get comfortable with moving forward in the operating budget is postponing difficult decisions until we have to make them. And the reason for that is because of the amount of uncertainty in many aspects of our financial operations. As we postpone the decision until it has to be made, that uncertainty will hopefully begin to resolve itself and make a difficult decision potentially much easier. So I would propose that we start taking that process with this potential action. The recommended timeline, if we debt financed, it would be to debt finance the 5.7 million dollars in the CIP this month, advance the money from the general fund to begin the project in early to mid 2021 and determine whether the prior advance should become a transfer, thus cash funding the project, or whether we should adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds to debt finance the project prior to the next CIP. This determination does not have to be an all or nothing. So the previous analysis talked about debt debt or cash financing, the whole 5.7. I don't necessarily think those are your only options. Obviously, you have many options and numbers between those two you can select for cash financing. And I think cash financing part of this project's cost may be a very a very good solution to some of the problems and uncertainty that we face. So the recommended timeline would allow some of the uncertainty regarding revenues, expenditures and future fund balance utilized and estimated in 21 to be much more known at that time. And we could have a better idea of what the general fund balance might be at the end of 21 if we're making this decision in the middle to third quarter of 2021. So that is the the staff's analysis and my recommendation for for this project and this project's funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions regarding it.
Great, thank you, Matt. Always appreciate the well-rounded look. So thanks, thanks for doing that. Questions, comments?
No, I think, Matt, I think you're wise. I think we have no idea what how this last quarter is going to play out and then 2021. So, you know, I agree with the idea of deferring this decision until then to try to get a better handle on this. There's just no way to look, since this is such a unique thing, this COVID problem, to really get a good handle on our numbers. So I just think it's prudent to defer this decision. Thank you. I agree with you.
Matt, could I ask a quick question? And maybe we could, I think we might cover it in the supplemental. The COVID fund that there's legislation tonight to set up, were any of the expenses that you outlined here potentially to be covered by that COVID, those shortfalls in the recreation or pool, any of those? Because I see the fund set up, but I don't see the fund being used, or would that all end up in operation?
No, that's a great question, and those funds are not part of this analysis because we have not made any final determinations on how to utilize those funds. Where, and that isn't to say we don't have an idea, it's just to say that there are a significant number of requirements and we're making sure to cross all our Ts and dot all our Is with federal money. We want to make sure that we do things the right way. Some of the expenditures in the Recreation Fund, I do believe, will be reimbursable, particularly those related to the COVID paid leave and the part-time staff salary associated with cleaning and maintaining sanitization of the rec center. So I do believe that we will be able to recover some of those. Some of that, though, goes to that $1 million that I'm concerned about, but not yet ready to make a determination on to the fourth quarter. So, yes, to answer your question, no, they haven't been. Yes, they should be, but I don't know that the magnitude is enough to sway me today to cash fund. But I think it's parts and pieces like that that will become known in 2021. We'll know how the COVID money was spent and we'll know if there's more COVID money in 2021 because we. because we may or may not be done with this at the federal level. And having that information would be useful because you know, I, I don't think our general fund will get to forty nine point seven percent, but I have to budget it there and we have to talk about it as though it is there today. But I think in six months we'll be talking about it in a different place and I hope in a much more positive place.
Yeah, Matt. So I, I very much appreciate the idea of wait and see because I do think that makes a lot of sense. I, I can't imagine that if things continue to be a problem that, that we would agree to a flat eighty six point seven million dollar expense budget next year, either when our actual spend this year is like seventy three million or whatever. So I think there's, there's ample opportunity, as you said here, as things play out. But because we can, we should probably, but you know, my inclination is if we can, we should cash finance it for all the reasons you outline, you outlined in your earliest thing. So that would be my, my leaning, but given that we can wait, I think I agree with John's comment that that, that makes sense. Because I think there are enough puts and takes here that are going to make that possible for us. So thanks, Matt. I appreciate all your work on this.
Matt, I think this is very thoughtful approach and I very much appreciate it. And I, I would tend to agree. I lean towards cash finding financing this if we can. But the, the fact that you provided us an opportunity to, to sit back and, and, and wait for just a minute is very, very helpful. And I, and I think presented an approach that is it's difficult because we're not a city that's accustomed to not planning everything. We plan everything. So it's hard to say, let's not plan this to a T. We're going to have to sit back for just a minute, but I do think it's the right approach.
I agree with my fellow council members. I think it's prudent to wait.
Matt, do you have a fixed cost of what, what that let, letting that, what that costs us, legal fees and?
I don't have a fixed cost, but our true interest cost, which I think is similar to what you were asking. I don't know whether legal fees are included in that or not. I know costs of issuance are et cetera. Our true interest cost on our last bond offering was two point four four percent. So that I would, I would say is pretty indicative of the cost to borrow for the city at that point in time.
Um, I, I appreciate the option of looking at this later in twenty twenty one. And perhaps, you know, it's hard to imagine that we will not have a project that we will want some debt on in twenty twenty two. You know, and perhaps we could forward that out of out of our budget and then free ourselves and do a debt issuance for twenty one and twenty two at one point in time. I know we have done that multiple times before where we have you know, fronted the money and paid ourselves back so that we stayed true, the tenants of our, our what, what we have, you know, approved to be fixed minimums. So good. Any other thoughts by council?
No, I would just say that I also agree. I think being conservative, I think testing our resilience here is, is, is wise. You know, it seems as if right now we're a little bit above anticipated revenue. So I think it'll, it'll speak a lot to the resilience of the city and how, how we'll go into the next quarter. So I'm for being very conservative and waiting as well.
Thanks, Jane. Matt, do you have more for us or does that?
I only have the following, and that is that I don't recall getting clear direction on where you would like that, that outstanding project funded. And I'm happy to put it in any year.
I, I think it's probably going to be funded in twenty twenty one. I guess we'll ask for a show of hands. I think we want to go ahead and finish up some of that on the west side. Two, three thumbs up. Andy, Jane, Kathy. Here's Andy, Kathy, Jane. You up for twenty twenty one fund of that? Is there anything else you need, Matt?
The final question, we did have one, a discussion that wanted to have regarding land acquisition funding. In the proposed twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five CIP, as has been our historical precedent, I would say, we've have an appropriation for five hundred thousand dollars for land acquisition. And I wanted to see if there was some interest in a discussion either tonight or potentially with finance committee or additionally as appropriate to consider options for increasing the amount of funding available for land acquisition, just generally, I believe, Mayor. I heard you express an idea about rolling over any unused portion of that five hundred thousand from year to year. And I think that's an excellent opportunity to consider. The downside is we'd be in the first or potentially second year of that. So it's, it's not going to be very much more than what we appropriated. But we could start somewhere. I'm happy to have that discussion and start down that road. I'm happy to explore other options that I think would be worthy of consideration, but are not something I'm ready to talk about now to potentially make funding available for land acquisitions. So I wanted to throw that out there and find out if there was any direction to be given tonight on that.
I think of the three or four tenants that has made Dublin so successful is our ability to acquire land. And you know, when there is money in the bank, it becomes much easier to do than when you have to, you know, issue debt or some, some other way of acquiring the funding for such land. So thank you, Matt, for that. I, I would look forward to hearing my fellow council members' thoughts, but I am very much in favor of building that account so that it becomes easier to acquire land.
I, I totally agree with you, Chris. I, it is, meaning when you think about it, we're shifting from cash to another asset and actually an appreciating asset that may actually appreciate at a faster rate than cash does. It's a good investment. It's an economic development tool. I think it's extremely wise. And as you pointed out, it's one of the things that sets us apart. You don't have to look too far around our community to see projects that we wouldn't have had we not invested in the land. So I think that's an outstanding suggestion.
Yeah, I would agree as well. I mean, I think that there are several options for how we might do this. And I, I guess I would request and see what your, my council, fellow council member's thoughts are about throwing this on to finance committee as a policy discussion. Because I think it's a great idea.
I like the idea of money rolling over from year to year and it building that way. And I guess if that doesn't put enough money in the coffers for this specific purpose, we can address it when the time arises.
So I, I think the rollover is, is an excellent way. And as you said, it's a, it's a, what is it? A low cost impact start to this, right? Because there's not going to be a whole lot of rollover. So to, you know, I would advocate for beginning this now and then taking and having a general policy discussion at finance. Are, are there other ways and approaches to do this? So we could get started with this one. And then I think it does make a lot of sense, Christina, to, to put that on the budget. I mean, excuse me, put that on the agenda and say, you know, what other policy things? So.
Yeah, I like that approach too. And it gives us a little time to have that discussion without feeling like we've got a rush to the end of the year to get a decision in. We can do this part now and have the policy discussion as we roll into the new year. I think that's a great idea.
I would agree with all those comments. I think our land acquisition has been such a strong economic development piece that we would, we would really be losing out if we didn't make sure that this fund was appropriately sourced. So I, you know, I'm for rolling it over and bringing it forward to finance to talk about other options.
Great. Thanks. Um. Heard from everybody. Matt, is there anything else?
The final thing is just the recommendation regarding this ordinance recommends staff recommends one of two actions depending on council's preference regarding the documentation. We recommend either adopting the ordinance tonight with the instructions that staff will update the documents pursuant to the September eighth work session and the council opinions expressed tonight. Or staff can go back and update the documents for the next meeting and we could pass it then. So depending upon your preference, I think we have the policies worked out. Now it's a matter of process and staff has a recommendation depending upon your, your preference regarding process.
Okay, um, I, well, let's, um, let's come back to this one second. I'm going to pause for public comment. Sue, do we have any via the web and, and do we have any email to the clerk's office?
No comments or questions.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate that. Okay. So to answer Matt's question, do we feel prepared and comfortable to vote on this evening or would we like a few outstanding things? Or information on those? Where is your comfortable call?
I, I think we've made all the decisions we need to make. So from that perspective, I think we have the question is, would we like to see it all put back together in a package so that we see for sure what we're passing? Which is always a good procedural thing, but from my perspective, I think we've answered all the outstanding questions. So it's more about do we want to put that package and bring it back so we see it or pass it now and then do it? So I think those are the two choices, but I think we've answered the questions.
Yeah, I agree. I think if you answer the questions, I'm overall comfortable with the direction and just in my own need for belts and suspenders, I'd like to see the changes in the text. Just in case there's any last minute little rinky dink thing that comes to us because we've got the time. Let's get the text right and, and, and pass it at the next. Bring it up for a vote at the next council meeting. That's my preference, but like to hear what everyone else has to say.
I agree with Christine. I think that's the most thorough route. This is my first go around with the CIP, but you know, to me, technically approving something that isn't in its final form, I'd rather see it in its final form.
I think that's the better way anyway for the public. They, they have an opportunity to see it as well. So I would go with that, but I agree with Kathy. I think we've we've probably wrestled down most of it.
Okay. Well, I think we've heard from a majority, Matt, that folks would like to see this on our next agenda in its final form and ready to vote on it at that point. Does that present any problems or issues for you?
Not at all. Happy to do it. We'll see you next, next council meeting.
Great.
So procedurally, want to just postpone that till September twenty eighth?
Okay, I will move to postpone the ordinance to the September twentieth council meeting for vote. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Lido. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Keeler?
Yes.
Valuto?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thanks again, Matt, for all your hard work on that. Sure do appreciate it. Bring this to ordinance twenty two dash twenty.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents to convey a perpetual gas line easement to Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc. Along Riverside Drive for the installation of underground gas facilities.
Great. Uh. Matt Ehrman will present for us this evening. There he is. Matt, please take it away.
Yes, as a, as a follow-up to the first reading of this ordinance, an updated site map was included in your packet for more clarity on the location of this easement. Other than that, no changes have been made to this ordinance and staff recommends approval. We happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Matt. And do we have any public comment come through the clerk's office?
No comments from the public.
And Sue, did we get any via the web?
No comments.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? We got most of those answers, uh, the other way last time and the map certainly was helpful. So thanks for that. Matt, appreciate the information. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Keeler?
Yes.
Valuto?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay. Introduction, first reading ordinances, ordinance twenty three dash twenty.
Is amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty one, two thousand twenty.
Eleanor Dasek.
Thanks. Thank you. And Mr. Stipler, Matt is back to present to us this evening.
Yes. Good evening. This is the Q three supplemental. It contains a number of changes relative to setting up the twenty twenty CIP for the twenty twenty one CIP is just, just discussed. A number of appropriations to deal with the impact of COVID nineteen. The appropriations and unappropriations in many cases requested are detailed in the memo. So I did not prepare a presentation because it would be a restatement of the memo. So I'm happy to take any questions on this piece of legislation.
Okay. Questions of council?
Hey, Matt, I, I had a couple. And this is just a clarification because I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand why, why we're doing some of this in that. I, I know sometimes things get deferred and we don't unappropriate them because they're moving from year to year. But this time we are. So there's two very large numbers in there. One, four point five million and the other fourteen point one million, a couple of large ones that we're unappropriating because the projects are actually moving to twenty twenty one, assuming we're going to reap, they're going to be included in the twenty twenty one budget. So could you just clarify why we're doing that for these projects, but don't necessarily do that for some other projects, please?
Sure. It has to do with the size and timing of these projects. So these projects are going to move forward in early twenty twenty one. Why, by that I mean January likely. So doing it in twenty twenty one is not really possible because we'd have to do it under an emergency. And I'm not even sure we would have time to do two here. And so it really needs to be set up and ready to go January first, which means inclusion, which I think most appropriately means inclusion in the twenty twenty one CIP. But the, the dollar figures that we're talking about here are so large that if you were to essentially pay for it twice by including it in the twenty twenty CIP and the twenty twenty one CIP, it throws off the numbers that makes it indistinguishable. So to clean it up, clarify it, to simplify it and to make everything work appropriately, we're, we're making those movements this year in a way that typically for other projects, we wouldn't have to.
That, that helps a lot. I appreciate that because largely it would have to be an emergency measure because it would be so soon. And I think that makes a lot, a lot of sense. So I appreciate that. The, the only other question relates back to the cares dollars conversation I asked a, a, a bit about earlier. So we're setting up a fund, we're putting that money in the fund. And then once we have that and we have, as you said, clear clarification on how we can spend that money, then we'll start to take the funds, the dollars out of that fund. So this sets that up as I, do I understand that correctly, Matt?
It does. So you, the, the ordinances are a little bit out of sequence in that we're discussing the appropriation to a fund we haven't created yet, but we will explore the revenue projections for that fund and that fund. It will be set up a little differently. It will actually be a fund that's expenditures exist as expenditures of other funds. So we'll actually move money from the funds that we're being reimbursed from to that fund and become an expenditure of that fund. So all of those three million dollars hopefully or two point four million dollars that we estimate without any local government give backs will be expenditures from other funds that are a sense saved in our operating budget. And we'll see reductions in expenditures in those funds corresponding to the increase in expenditures from COVID. And that'll be how that is, is done. And we need to appropriate that money as soon as possible. And then in fact, in an amount greater than we anticipate because if local governments do give that money back, it will be redistributed and we could receive more than we expect. And we can't encumber anything we don't have appropriated.
Cool. And then one final question, if I could please, the amounts that we're appropriating for the recreation, et cetera. Those are just for twenty twenty one, right? So those, or are there some twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty, I apologize, just for twenty twenty? There, there isn't any twenty twenty one in those numbers that we would see in the budget. So those fairly large numbers, you have to swallow hard when you look at the, the delta in some of those, but those are all truly twenty twenty related.
Yes, absolutely. We have to, because of the decrease in revenues for those funds, we have to amend our certificate of resources with the county. And when we do that, it, it causes our budget to be out of alignment essentially with what we have appropriated. So that's why there's large unappropriations in those funds to bring that expenditure number down. We have to bring the revenue number up slightly so. We have to bring the revenue number up slightly so that the fund remains positive on that. Well, in general, we want the fund main positive. It also happens to be that the paperwork at the county remains positive, which is a nice side benefit of that action, but that's why we're taking, taking those actions.
Thank you very much.
Matt, just really fast, in the health services section, which is section one. The rate that you're talking about, is that, is that 887 per capita?
Yes.
And I think the same issue is the increase in cost compared to the 2019 per capita rate. So did we grow beyond 50,000 people?
I would have to go back and look at the information that was used to create the budget, but they have an estimated population reference and then that, that number on a per person basis. And frankly, we've, we've estimated three and four percent growth for the last few years now, and it seems to always outpace our estimate because we don't get the actual documentation of what our bill will be until after we pass the budget.
I gotcha.
I hope that we've changed that this year. I put a fairly large increase in there so that we can get away from this situation where we just don't budget enough of an increase. But that is, we received the bill from Pat Franklin County Public Health and then this is exactly related to that invoice.
I gotcha. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
But also, Anne, we did not pass a contract with them till after the first of the year, if you remember, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
After our budgeting process as well, which I think contributed this little bit.
Yeah, it makes sense. There's a timing issue there.
Okay, anything else? A public comment. Sue, do we have any coming in via the web?
No public comments.
Thank you. And Anne, through online?
Oh, we do not.
Okay. We will have a second reading, public hearing scheduled for September the 28th. Or ordinance 23-20. Brings us to ordinance 24-20.
This is authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.069 acre standard highway easement from Chester A. Gunca located at 6149 Caro Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge.
Construction for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension project is currently not programmed as the city of Dublin and its regional partners work to develop a full funding plan for these improvements. However, this project remains a priority for the city and the region. In that spirit, our practice has been to pursue the acquisition of property interest from willing property owners in the project area as those opportunities occur. The city, through its acquisition agent, has come to mutually agreeable terms with Mr. Chester A. Gunca, whose property is located on the south side of Caro Road, east of Avery Road at 6149 Caro Road. The city participated in good faith discussions with Mr. Gunca, resulting in mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition of the property at the appraised value, which was $14,159. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the second reading, public hearing on September 28th. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Paul. A public comment. Have we received any into the clerk's office, Anne?
We have not.
And Sue, have we livestreamed any questions?
No questions or comments.
But council questions? Hearing none. I know this is something we've been chipping away at a long time, so thanks for that. If there's nothing from council, we will look forward to seeing you again on this matter September the 28th.
Thank you.
Brings us to ordinance 25-20.
Authorizing the establishment of the coronavirus relief special revenue fund declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Staff report, Matt?
Good evening again, council. This ordinance again creates the coronavirus relief special revenue fund and declares an emergency. Creates the new fund as required by the Ohio amended House Bill 481. We expect deposits to the, deposits to this fund totaling about $2.4 million. The first local government fund based distribution in House Bill 481 was estimated is about $380,000. The controlling board action recently taken distributed about half the money of the first House bill, so we expect about $190,000 from that action. And the Senate has passed and the House is considering Senate Bill 357 that is based on a per capita distribution formula. And again, that is pending in the House. If a per capita distribution formula were adopted according to the spreadsheets presented as part of that bill, we would receive about $1.8 million. So the total distribution of CARES funds to this fund will total about $2.4 million in our estimate. Additional distributions are possible if other local governments return unencumbered funds. So there's a deadline in the ordinance that if you have not encumbered the money, you have to give it back. And if it's given back, it will be redistributed to local governments that have utilized all their funds. Obviously, there's no information on how much that might be. So I took a wild guess at 25% and made the fund $3 million to account for that. My hope is that all of us local governments are far more efficient than that and they're much less than that is given back. But we will, we will find out as the process moves along. So $3 million was appropriated in the third quarter supplemental in case those additional funds are received. As to declaring an emergency, the current deadline under House Bill 481 to encumber these funds is actually October 15th. If this ordinance passes at the next meeting on September 28th with a 30 day effective date, that would actually be well past the October 15th deadline. So the city would not be able to encumber these funds under the current deadline and may have to return all the CARES Act funding for failing to encumber it in a timely manner. I think it's important to note that this deadline is very soon and we haven't even received all of this money. So it's, it's from my perspective, a very difficult deadline to meet. And there seems to be some recognition of that because Senate Bill 357 as passed by the Senate pushes this deadline back for encumbering these funds until November 20th. And I want to be clear, that has not made it through law. It may, it may not. I would recommend an emergency regardless because the city needs to begin the process of accounting for these funds as soon as possible. And having this fund set up as an emergency allows us to do so. I think it's appropriate to pass emergency legislation directly related to the emergency itself. And that is what we're asking to do here. So I recommend, staff recommends that council adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure at the second reading, public hearing on September 28th. And I'm available for questions.
Great, thanks, Matt. I did hear today that they possibly could be moving that date back to December the 5th. I think there might be an amendment coming to Senate Bill 357, but that, but, but then the Senate went on recess today because I believe their leader requested positive for COVID and they all went home and don't have a return date minded yet. So I normally am vehemently opposed to emergency legislation, but when the emergency means you're receiving MIRV, that's different, a different scenario than an emergency and you're spending money. So thanks for that. I sure do appreciate it. Comments from council? Hearing none. Do we have public comment, Sue?
No public comment.
Anne?
We have no public comment.
Okay, well, we will have a second reading. If there's nothing else from council members, I don't see anything to be assigned. We'll have second reading on September the 28th. And that will be a request for an emergency passage at that point. Okay, ordinance 26-20.
Is amending ordinance number 5894, passed June 20 of 1994, as subsequently amended to supplement the public improvements to be made to benefit the property identified in that ordinance.
Okay, and can I get an introduction? Well, Christina, you introduced it. Sorry about, I might have missed that. And again, Matt's working overtime tonight, so.
Great.
Again, Matt Stifler.
This ordinance modifies the public improvements permissible under the perimeter center TIF. Existing ordinance, original ordinance 58-94 created this TIF in order to provide a revenue stream for extending the Kaufman and Kaufman Road and Perimeter Drive. This ordinance was subsequently amended in 2003, 2003, from a non-school to a straight TIF. And future added roadway improvements, including Emerald Parkway to Avery-Meerfield Drive, including the intersection of Avery-Meerfield Drive and the Avery-Meerfield Drive perimeter loop intersection were added to the list of public improvements permissible in this TIF. This ordinance, ordinance 26-20, amends the public infrastructure improvements further to include the US 33 State Route 161 post-road interchange and the projects included in the 2021 CIP, including the perimeter widening from Holt Road to Commerce Parkway, post-preserve's access modification and improvements to the Avery-Shire Rings Road intersection. From a funding standpoint, the fund balance in the perimeter center TIF is currently $5.1 million and it has annual revenues of just over $400,000 per year. This modification will allow the following TIF funds to be utilized as specified in the third quarter supplemental, which includes the 33 post-road interchange land acquisition and in the proposed 2021 CIP. And the years and amounts of funding used and projects are used there. I'm not going to go through those because those are included in the supplemental and the CIP. So it's also important to point out that the required notice of this modification has been sent to the Dublin City School District and the Tolles Career Technical Center. But again, this is a, a straight TIF. So we recommend that council adopt ordinance 26-20 at the second hearing on September 28th, 2020.
Great, thanks, Matt. And just for clarity, when you say a straight TIF, that is a non-school TIF?
Correct.
Okay, public comment. Anne, do we have anything in the clerk's office?
We do not.
And Sue, do we have any through the web chat?
No public comment.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none. We will look forward to the second reading on that as well on September the 28th. Okay, introduction, public hearing resolutions, resolution 46-20.
Accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I'll introduce it.
Christina?
Here we go. It occurs to me, I did not, I did not share the presentation on the last ordinance, so I apologize. I was, but one is available in board pack. So this resolution accepts the amounts and rates and authorizes tax levies. This resolution maintains the allocation that's been in place since 2010, 2014 CIP. It allocates .35 mils to the Parkland Acquisition Funds and is estimated to generate just over $800,000 per year. The 2020 year end balance in this fund is $2.3 million. It's also important to note that the Kaufman Park Debt Service that is paid out of this fund ends this year and that's the amount of $207,000. 1.4 mils is distributed to the Capital Improvements Fund and that's estimated to generate over $3.2 million per year. And these estimates are in line with those used to develop the proposed CIP. So these numbers are not a surprise. So additionally, in addition to those inside millage, we have 1.2 mils of outside or voted millage for police operations that was approved in June of 1976. That effective rate for that outside millage is now .18 and some change mils. It's estimated to generate about $542,000 per year and this is credited to the safety fund where we pay for our police operations. This is a routine resolution in order to concur with information provided by the Budget Commission of Franklin County. It's required to be returned to the county auditor by September 30th for inclusion in the subsequent tax year, which is why we're asking for it tonight. It's important to note that it does not create or increase taxes. It only acknowledges that the city and the county auditor agree on the millage distribution and the amount collected. And staff recommends passage of this resolution at tonight's council meeting. With that, I'm.
So it looks like perhaps around the end of the year, we might have in the neighborhood of $3.3 million in our Parkland Acquisition Fund with the additional Kaufman Park Debt Service being paid off and the, what's generated this year?
I'm projecting that the end of this year, we'll have 2.3 million is the 2020. At the end of 2021, we'll have 3.1.
Right.
Correct.
Public comment. Sue, do we have anything through the web chat?
No public comment.
And Anne, do we have any through the clerk's office?
Do not.
Questions, comments, discussion from council? Hearing none, seeing none, I think? That's cool. Okay. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Saluto?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Brings us to resolution 47-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the waterline replacement phase five project.
I'll introduce it.
And Mr. Hammer Smith does our staff report.
Yes, members of council, on August 27th of this, four bids were received, opened and read for the waterline replacement phase five project. This project will replace existing two inch and three inch water lines with new six inch ductile iron water lines, including fire hydrants and other associated pertinences in six separate locations. Those locations would be Red Bay Court and Tamarus Court over off Atonti Drive along, which is actually off of Riverside Drive. Bennett Court located in the River Forest neighborhood, Turnberry Court. Inver Gordon Court, Doneger Park Drive and Dunblane Court up off of Doneger Park north of Memorial Drive. So those are the six locations. In this time of not having, you know, public involvement meetings to keep residents informed of this upcoming project, we did do direct mailings sent for three virtual WebEx meetings. Those actually started last week. And we had, actually the week before, we had one last week and our last one is tomorrow evening. We've had a couple residents participate in those meetings with questions, but I did want you to know that we've used that forum to involve the public in this project. The engineer's estimate for this project is $690,000. The budgeted funds for these replacements in the 2020 capital improvements program are $600,000. Dan Burton Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid of $533,417.32. Our previous experience with Dan Burton has been excellent on several recent projects and most notably, two years ago, they did our waterline replacement project phase four. So we have high confidence in their abilities to perform well on this project. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution this evening, accepting the lowest and best bid from Dan Burton Incorporated. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Paul. Sue, have we had any public comment come through the web chat?
No comments.
Anne through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? What, what is the, what is the material the existing water lines made of in most of these areas?
Generally speaking, the, it's, the two inches mostly copper. Waterline itself, the three inch can be some small ductile iron. The biggest difficulty we have is our break history with these smaller mains and then lack of the ability to flush with not having fire hydrants. And then obviously not having fire hydrants presents a challenge and not having fire protection in these neighborhoods. So certainly an improvement for these neighborhoods.
Yeah, will be a significant upgrade for those neighborhoods. Thanks for working on that. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Saluto?
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, council.
It's Paul. Okay, it brings us to the other item, the other portion of our agenda, and we have Crawford-Hoyne Bridge Park financing. And I, Matt or Dana, are you going to be presenting?
Just in keeping with the theme tonight, I was going to kind of hand off to Matt to do a little bit of an overview that we'd been working on, and I know that Allison Shrail is on from Crawford-Hoyne, as is Greg Daniels, our special legal counsel, so certainly I think perhaps it might be most appropriate to let Matt go over that and go from there.
Great, thank you. Matt, take it away.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I was actually going to take a few slides off this evening and hand this over to Greg Daniels, so I will share the presentation and allow Greg to lead our discussion through some of these slides.
All right, good evening, council. Hope everyone can hear me.
Yep, you're good.
All right, thank you. Following up on our meeting from a couple weeks ago, Matt and I put together a brief presentation for you, just a little refresher on Bridge Park and the various bond issues that are outstanding to give you some background on the current request. What you have in front of you here, we talk about blocks a lot when we talk about Bridge Park, so we thought it would be good to have a quick refresher on blocks. What you see in front of you is Bridge Park on the east side of the river. Starting down by the roundabout on the southern end, you have A Block, that is the one with the AC Marriott with the Event Center. There's an office building, there's also a public parking garage. As you go right to left across this page, actually going north, you have B and C Block. Those are mixed-use blocks, those each have a large public parking garage. To the left of those, or to the north, you have D Block, that's the block currently under construction. Then if you go up or east from that, you have H Block that has the townhouse is going to the right, you have G Block that's currently an undeveloped area, that's one of the next blocks to be developed. And then finally, just to the south of that, you have F Block, that's the one that has the new hotel being developed on it. Not showing on this picture, but also important is Z Block, that is the condo and mixed-use block on the west side of the river. Matt? Council had asked for a quick overview on the various bonds outstanding in connection with Bridge Park. So starting chronologically, we have the B and C Block Garage Bonds. Those are the first bonds issued. The city was actually the issuer for these bonds. There is thirty-two million dollars of bonds to fund the B and C Block garages. These bonds are payable from tiff service payments just from B and C Block. In order to execute the bond issue and get the best rate possible, the city pledged its non-tax revenues as a backstop to those tiff payments, although we have minimum service payments from the owners of B and C Block that are in excess of the bond debt service. In order to really drive down that interest rate, a backstop was necessary, given the market conditions at the time. Council had asked about the status of some of these bonds. B and C Block are experiencing no cash flow difficulties at the current time, nor do we expect any cash flow difficulties to occur, given those minimum service payment commitments, which are tax leavings ahead of any of the private financing or equity interests in the project. Chronologically, the next bonds that were issued were the Z Block Garage Bonds, again, Z Block is on the west side. These were bonds actually issued by three port authorities led by the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, who together issued approximately twelve point eight million dollars of bonds in two thousand and sixteen to fund the public Z Block Garage. These bonds are secured by community authority charges and tiff revenue from Z Block. For these bonds, there is plenty of cash flow, it is not experiencing any cash flow difficulties for these bonds. In fact, there is excess revenue from Z Block, which is being used to support the A Block financing. Again, that was always the plan, Z Block was always going to be a strong block that could spin off additional revenue to help A Block. So now we get to A Block. A Block was the next series of bonds issued. These were entirely issued by the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority in January of two thousand and seventeen to fund the A Block Garage, roadways associated with A Block, and the Event Center. So there was a lot of stuff funded out of these bonds, and they consisted of twenty-seven point three million dollars of senior bonds and four point eight six million dollars of subordinate bonds. And it's those subordinate bonds that are experiencing the cash flow difficulties we talked about on our last meeting. In order to make the A Block financing work, there is all sorts of revenues pledged to them. There is tiff service payments from A Block, there is a lodging tax grant from AC Marriott and Home to Suites that was provided under the development agreement. There is NCA lodging charges from AC Marriott, rental payments from the Event Center, NCA charges on the H Block Townhomes. If you remember, that's the block on the northeast part of the site. The service payments I mentioned a moment ago from Z Block that were not needed for the Z Block bonds, and the backup NCA charge of up to twelve mils across all of the developed Bridge Park property. As we talked about in our last meeting, the four bolded revenue sources together are providing some cash flow difficulties for those subordinate bonds. That is the crux of the request from Crawford-Hoyne, in that because of those cash flow difficulties, approximately three mils of those twelve mils of additional charges would need to be levied in order to cover the two thousand and twenty-one shortfall for those A Block subordinate bonds. The next series of bonds, you might recall, from a year or two ago, we amended the development agreement. Following that amendment, Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority issued approximately thirty-five point five six million dollars of bonds. Again, a lot of stuff in this got funded out of that bond series, including the D Block Garage, the roadways for D Block, and the public market. Those bonds are secured by NCA charges and service payments from D Block, NCA sales charges across all the blocks in Bridge Park, that's the half-penny sales charge collected by the NCA, and that same backup NCA charge of up to twelve mils across all the developed Bridge Park property. The current financial projections for these bonds show no projected deficit. In fact, a portion of the bonds are being currently refinanced by the Finance Authority for savings, producing some additional cushion. But we do note that if the NCA sales charges fall significantly short, then the backup charge may need to be levied sometime in the future. Again, not anticipated, especially given the savings from the refinancing, but it's at least theoretically possible. And then the current block under development and the next series of bonds to be issued are the F Block Bonds. There is actually a short-term note of about two and a half million dollars issued last year for F Block to help that development get started, funding some roadway improvements and garage improvements. The Finance Authority expects to issue about seven and a half million dollars of additional bonds for roadway improvements, additional public market costs, and additional garage costs, primarily for the G Block Garage. Crawford-Hoyne has proposed to use three hundred and forty thousand dollars of this bond issue to help support those A Block subordinate bonds, to eliminate the shortfall for the next few years, in lieu of having that three-mil charge. The F Block Bonds are secured by tiff, NCA, and city bed tax revenue from that new F Block Hotel. There is also a backup charge just on the F Block Hotel if those hotel charge and bed tax revenues do not materialize. And finally, there is that same NCA charge of up to twelve mils across all the developed Bridge Park property. That's really a backup charge if the F Block owner doesn't pay the first backup charge. So as long as the F Block Hotel owner is always paying, there is no need for those twelve mils or any portion of those twelve mils to be levied for the F Block bonds.
Hey, Greg, thank you for that recap. Just to provide some additional information on the question before us, Crawford-Hoyne's requesting for A Block Bonds Revenue Escrow Fund be allowed to be debt-financed as part of the F Block Bond Offering. This request is before council because the amended development agreement between Crawford-Hoyne and the City of Dublin does not explicitly authorize this category of expenditure. The creation of this Revenue Escrow Fund would delay the need for additional millage charged to be levied on all Bridge Park properties, including residential office and retail. The current estimated shortage is one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, and a little over a hundred and ten thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. And the COVID-nineteen pandemic, as Greg outlined, has reduced revenues associated with the bed taxes and Event Center that has contributed to this shortage. Staff recommends that council permit the creation of an A Block Revenue Escrow Fund in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This amount will cover the estimated two thousand and twenty-one shortfall and is in line with the reduction in revenues directly attributable to COVID-nineteen-related declines in bed tax and Event Center revenue. Staff would also recommend that should a shortfall exist in future years, the revenue-generating mechanism specified in the agreement, i.e. the levying of additional millage, be allowed to be utilized. And with that, Greg, Allison, and I are available for any questions.
Great, thank you all for that information. I do want to take a moment for public comment. Have we received any, Anne, to the clerk's office?
No, we have not received any at the clerk's office.
And Sue, have we received any via the web chat?
Yes, we did, and I will read a email that we received from Robert Smith at sixty-three ten Riverside Drive, Dublin, Ohio. His comments are Crawford-Hoyne received PPP funds to pay expenses. Now Crawford-Hoyne wants to receive the NCA of expenses owed in the amount of two point nine percent. This is only the beginning of the rob Peter to pay Paul. How much of the request, switcheroo, directly affects Crawford-Hoyne? More info is needed on the solvency of the NCA. New data came out regarding COVID affecting restaurant use prior to infection. There is nothing indicating a short-term solution to the pandemic. The excess funds should be held in reserve. The individuals who invested in NCA property are required to pay the shortfall. And that is the only comment we have.
Thank you. Okay, council comments, discussion, questions?
I've got a bunch of questions, and they're probably for Greg. So Z Block, which I guess is a successful block and was assumed to be successful, some Z Block revenue can be used for A Block. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so some Z Block revenue goes to A Block, then there's a tiff from A Block that goes to F Block. I guess my point is, is, you know, there's money moving from block to block. I guess I'm just curious why we're being asked to allow for movement from one block to another, maybe it wasn't in the original agreement?
That's right, it's not a feature of the agreement. One of the things the city was interested in is making sure that the bond money was spent on the priority projects for the city, especially since there was city tiff revenue being used to pay the bonds. So as we went through the agreement, there is a number of things that the bond money can be used for. Of course, at the time, no one thought of or imagined COVID-nineteen or the need to bridge these sorts of shortfalls, so it was just not included in the agreement.
The, the concept that the NCA, if sales charges fall short, then backup needs to be, needs to be levied sometime in the future. I guess my question is, how much runway do we have here to make a decision? We've, we've heard tonight that, you know, there's federal assistance that is, has been paid, is, is being paid, and is probably going to be paid into the future. Is there any reason why we can't sit back and wait for, I guess, finality or certainty with respect to more federal assistance before we authorize this move?
We have a little bit of runway, we don't have a lot, and the reason for that is what the NCA is required to do. So it has debt service to pay next year. If it looks like the revenues aren't going to materialize, and it's definitely looking that way, they have to put this backup NCA charges on the tax bills that will be collected by the Franklin County Auditor and Treasurer next year. In order to do that, the NCA has to tell the auditor, by the end of this month, maybe the auditor will give them another week or two, how much they need to have put on those tax bills, because the auditor is preparing the tax bills now. So that's the timing for this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
Greg, I had just a general question about opportunities to fund this shortfall. As you outlined, thank you very much quite clearly, that there's, there's funds coming from multiple sources, including Z, including guaranteed payments, et cetera, so forth. If, if the shortfall were to happen this year, next year, ten years from now, et cetera, so forth, are there other abilities to collect money? And I think we talked about this last year, i.e. from the developer themselves, to fund this shortfall? Is that the only list, or is that the prescribed list, if you know what I'm asking? Are there other ways to get infusions, and if so, how?
There could be other ways to get voluntary cash-infused infusions to pay debt service. The only legal tool the NCA has available to it is this backup charge. The NCA can't go out and levy additional taxes or additional charges, it does it by contract with the property owners, and this is the tool afforded to it, and the tool would have to exercise under the bond agreements to pay debt service. It has to make sure the debt service is paid. There can be other outside voluntary sources to pay.
But Crawford-Hoyne is free to get those outside voluntary sources if they so chose?
Yeah, they're not legally obligated to do so, but they can if they so choose.
But there's nothing to prohibit that?
To prohibit them.
There would be nothing to prohibit themselves, to loan themselves that money to pay this or whatever other vehicle or mechanism.
That's right, yep, Crawford-Hoyne, other governments, you know, it's, the NCA needs cash to pay debt service. If there's outside cash, I'm sure it would accept it to pay debt service. That's what it's worried about, is making that debt service payments. The only legal tool it has is the backup charge, but any money will do.
Thank you.
Question, Greg? Yeah, I have a question, Chris. Greg, as we're, as, as staff has suggested, allowing a hundred and ninety-six or whatever the number is for covering two thousand and twenty-one, can NCA also just levy charges for a shorter period of time, or would they be required to do a three-year period?
The NCA levies charges a year at a time, so it has to levy charges for all of the two thousand and twenty-one shortfall and get those down to the county auditor within and get those down to the county auditor within the next few weeks.
And 2021 alone, again, is how much money?
That's that $195,000 figure.
Okay, but the 20, was there a charge for the 2020 or has that been paid? Did I see something like 23,000 was?
I think there might have been a slight shortfall this year.
Okay.
We're projecting a shortfall of revenues of about $25,000 for 2020. But as Greg mentioned, because there are projected shortfalls that we're charging for through the NCA, we don't have the ability to go back and fix 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Gregory?
Thanks, I think these are questions for you, Greg. So the 12 mils that are mentioned in several different blocks, those are the same 12 mils, right? So that if you use three in block A, you couldn't, you're down to nine then in one of the other blocks.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, and you also, you mentioned that the bonds for block Z, the building on the west side are functioning well and they're working. And you also mentioned that A, Z block proceeds could be used to pay A block bonds. So is there a reason that they can't use Z block proceeds to cover the shortfall of the A block?
So the Z, what we're talking about is the Z block TIF revenue that gets collected off C block as well as the regular charges on Z block, not any additional charge. Those monies are being used to pay A block. That was always the plan for A block. Even with those monies being counted in, there's still that $195,000 shortfall for next year.
Is there any extra proceeds in Z block to 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 pay this shortfall? Or am I not asking, is that is that a stupid question?
So the Z block bonds, those proceeds have already all been spent a few years ago. They're all spent to build the Z block garage.
Got it.
So what we have is the annual revenue in the form of TIF service payments and annual community development charges on Z block. Those are already factored in. So even accounting for those, there is still the shortfall.
Okay, thank you. And and so I want to make sure I understand, Greg, and so I want to make this statement and then you correct me if I'm wrong. And it goes to this this idea of the waterfall. And I know in Crawford Hoynes memo that they provided us, that was the it's kind of almost like a frequently asked question thing, and then they answer it. And they said, will there be any impact on the city's position in the F block waterfall? And they say, no, the debt service and cash flow would all be the same. I think I understand that, but in at least in the A block, the waterfall associated with the A block, wouldn't we, in either one of them, I guess, F or A, wouldn't we be putting almost like an additional expense ahead of the water starting to fall?
There is, would be some additional debt service in a manner of speaking within the waterfall. So the waterfall pays a lot of things, including debt service. Now, in the short term, it's not going to make a difference in terms of cash flows because the money is all being used anyway. And even with the F block bonds, if this $340,000 wasn't used to help A block, it would just be used for the G block garage. That's the infrastructure improvement currently under construction.
Got it, thank you. And so is it, if if someone were to say that this this agreement, development agreement was entered into between Crawford Hoynes and the city, and now the taxpayers are getting handed an extra, whatever the numbers are, 200,000 or $300,000 bill, that's not accurate because why?
Really because two things. For one, except for the bed tax grant, which is part of all these financings, there's no tax revenue being used to fund these bonds. These are community authority charges, these are TIF payments. And that was always the plan to just use those revenues and not tax revenues to fund these. What you might be getting at is, at the end of the day, might this reduce the excess that the city would receive back? If you might recall, the city is at the very bottom of the waterfall, getting basically all the excess money that's not needed for debt service. In theory, that's possible. We don't know yet because all the community facilities aren't built. We don't know all the debt service, we don't know all the revenues. But in theory, it's possible, we just don't know yet. I would say that in terms of excess, the the excess from these blocks is nothing that the financial professionals for the city have ever counted on. Because it'd be, you know, depending on what projections you look at, at least 10 to 15 years from now, before those would materialize. Just because there's a lot of debt service and, you know, it's still an active construction project. Bridge Park is still being built, so that's where the money is going to go in the near term.
Got it, thank you. I I think that actually answers also my previous, the waterfall question. I understand that better now, that it is kind of an additional, it's an additional bill getting paid before we would all the way get down to where we are at the end, if there's going to be any left.
Right. And we just don't know if there's going to be any left at this point.
And we just don't know. It said in the, I think it was in your guys' presentation, that COVID and the bed tax reduction contributed to this shortfall. Are there other things that contributed to that or is this primarily but for COVID, we'll be even be having this conversation?
We might or might not be having the conversation. I would kick it over to Allison, but my comment on that would be there's other factors, particularly around the H block townhome buildout that contribute to this. Allison will have to answer. COVID definitely exacerbated both the amount of the shortfall and the the ability of the property owners, the tenants to make any payments. So there's a hit on both sides due to COVID, but it's not the only cause of the shortfall. So Allison, if you would comment further on that, please.
Sure. So I think Greg did a great job of highlighting the various revenue sources that go to service the debt on these bonds. One of the key components that he highlighted was also the H block. Obviously, as we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we've built the first of three phases on that block. We're advancing the design for the remaining of that block right now, which is substantially different from our original design for several reasons we discussed last week. The excess funds that were coming from bed tax revenues and the event center revenues were helping to bridge that gap and because of COVID are no longer available. And that's why we're seeing, part of why we're seeing a shortfall now.
Okay, thank you.
Others?
Can I just clarify, Greg, because you you mentioned that, and tell me where I, as Greg said, tell me where I go astray in this. That the amount of the bond for G block will be whatever it is. If some of the money goes to pay this shortfall, it won't be spent on G block, it won't be spent on the garage. So what what we're saying is we're going to use that to pay some debt coverage, but the asset we are going to be built is, will be lower by some amount than that. So, you know, we're we're using the funds to to pay the debt rather than build the asset, right? Did I say that correctly or incorrectly?
That's correct, right.
If I can just add to that, Kathy, one thing that Greg, Greg went through a bunch of reasons why it was important for us to do this through the F block bonds, but we're also taking advantage of rate savings. So we don't see this as a disadvantage for the remainder of the blocks. And we're projecting to have plenty of TIF revenues from the balance of Bridge Park getting built out to complete G block and to complete all the public improvements that the city is expecting with the completion of Bridge Park.
So following that same logic, it would seem to me if if we have this rates, that some of that rate fund savings is accruing. So there would be other revenue sources to Crawford Hoynes to pay for this. So again, I sort of go back to the conversation at at the front. If if everything else is 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 running full bear, it seems to me there would be sufficient funds in in one conversation or the other here to fund this rather than to necessarily request it from the city. And so again, that that's the part, there's there's quite a disconnect here. And again, just to be clear, I know you're not asking us to write a check. I understand that. But it sounds like if all the rest of this is is running along, somewhere that the, to use the waterfall analogy, somewhere this water is not flowing in this conversation. And and it's a bit, for the amount of money here, this 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 isn't making, you know, total clarity.
Yeah, and I think I'll just comment, so the rate savings I was referencing are specifically related to the public financing. So that's financing that we're going out to get, sorry, my lights keep going off here, not for Crawford Hoynes use. These are specifically debt mechanisms that we're putting in place to fund the public improvements at Bridge Park. And I did want to comment just on your question earlier and add. So a couple of things as it relates to Crawford Hoynes loaning in funds to cover. As Greg mentioned, certainly, in theory, that's something that we could do, but there's a couple of issues with that. First of all, we would have no collateral to pledge towards that. So there's literally no way that we would have any guarantee of getting those funds back at any point in time. We'd also be back in front of council discussing a modification to the waterfall in order to allow for a mechanism of those funds to be returned because that's not currently contemplated in in the waterfall at all. And so what we presented is a low-rate, low-cost source of funds in order to fund the shortfall that while we understand, you know, long-term and the excess waterfalls the city might be expecting, we're asking for your participation in that. But we feel like it's one of the the paths of least resistance in order to fill this gap created by COVID. And the last thing I just wanted to comment on, I know that there's been some some questions as we've worked through explaining all of this on how Z block factors into this and some of the potential excess revenues that could have come from Z block to fill this shortfall. And I think that we're similarly offering F block revenues as an option to cover this shortfall. So while Z block, that ship has already sailed because it's already been built, we're taking advantage or offering to take advantage of future revenues with F block in a similar way in order to help fund the shortfall.
Okay, other questions?
I have a question for Allison. Allison, in looking in looking back over the agreement, there are supposed to be a cushion of bond issuers are supposed to have like a cushion of a certain percentage for, is a 5% above par that you keep in a reserve fund. Those reserve funds, are they exhausted? What are those reserve funds? How are they used?
We had a small portion of reserve funds that were being used this year, and they are shown in the waterfall and helping to reduce that gap. The $25,000 we talked about earlier, I think it's about 100,000, but Matt might need to confirm that for me. But outside of that, those funds are depleted.
Okay.
Are not available.
Okay, and they're depleted because of this COVID situation? They're depleted for, how were they depleted? Because it was only a 23 or 25,000 dollar gap? But you had 100,000 dollar reserve? So the remainder, how was that that depleted?
I'm going to ask Greg to jump in and talk specifically about the reserves related to this debt service.
Okay.
If you can.
And it looks like Matt might be looking for the number, but the way these reserves, especially because these are subordinate bonds, the way these reserves are funded is typically by excess cash flow over time. So if we were five, six, seven years from now, the model would have shown a much higher reserve level because we would have had, and you know, projections held, five, six, seven years of excess cash flow to catch in a reserve to help even out things going over time. Because this disruption in cash flow is happening so early in the life of the bonds, that means the reserves get depleted very, very quickly. And they might not have even been fully funded at all.
Okay. One other question, Allison, and and because I'm not sure exactly where construction is. Because the G block garage has not been started yet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there was some discussion about maybe not a need for certain garage being built. Was that not on on G block, was that on F block?
That's correct, it's on F block. So we're we're evaluating options with the B block parking garage. A previous bond issuance allowed us to modify that garage to put a core in the back so it could be accessed by F block.
Okay, so I guess what I'm looking for is there, are there savings that can be had on G block? So that really there's no, this reduction of possible waterfall revenues at the end. Are there ways to reduce expenses on G block that makes this all come out even?
Potentially, and we're really looking at, we've got only a few blocks left at Bridge Parks. We're looking holistically at what it'll take to complete the development in a way that best serves the community. And so we're not looking at the F block issuance that's here before you today in a vacuum. We're certainly looking at the remainder of the blocks as well.
And is and is there a way to kind of guarantee that a savings could be made somewhere else to make up for the shifting of dollars and the possible reduction of waterfall revenue?
I don't think we're prepared to guarantee any savings in the future blocks at this time. We're still evaluating the costs of the G block garage. Since it's future funding, you know, frequently we're talking about what's what's in the future, so we couldn't guarantee that at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments, questions? I'll I'll say, I have a few thoughts. I looking through the, all of the memos, the nearly dozen or so memos on this that's inputted Board Pack, and I know there was a memo that outlined, it was around a million five in PPP that Crawford Hoynes was able to secure. For me, it is premature to, you know, we have a lot of questions for our own lost revenues, right? We heard from Matt this evening about projected lost revenues next year and what it might look like. We really don't know what our lost revenues might be at this point in time. Another thing that we don't know is we don't know what the federal government intends to do relative to the travel, tourism, entertainment industry. And if anything, I I did call Congressman Boberson today to find out if they had any plans and what they thought might come of that. He actually was headed down to Washington this afternoon to see what, have those discussions of what that might look like from the federal government's perspective. So, you know, I do believe that that this shortfall could be filled by the owners in for this period of time. And if they wanted to perhaps levy those additional fees next year, that is something that certainly they could re-entertain when they had a little bit more information. But really, one of the most concerning issues for me is the conversation of lost revenues. I think we're very early in this pandemic to fully understand what lost revenues are going to be. And if we start the lost revenues discussion, I think every, probably 90% of the companies in the city would like to make a case for their lost revenues and how they fill those voids. And so that that's really not a space that I I am comfortable with the government stepping in to make a decision to allow someone to levy something to fill that gap when others, there are many others in this community that don't have that opportunity to do so. So I, you know, on our agenda here this evening, it does not call for a vote. So Greg, I, what is it that you are looking for directly from us this evening?
Well, I think the city administration was looking for some form of guidance from council. Could be a vote, could be a sense of council. City manager under the agreement has the ability to approve expenses. And the reason this is brought before council is there's certain categories of expenses that the city manager can approve, and this was not one of them. So I think, and I can have Matt or Dana elaborate a little bit further in what they're looking for, but I think it was some sort of sense of council, if they're comfortable with this expenditure and having the city manager approve the expenditure.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. I would agree with Greg. I think the ask is pretty specific. And I think it's a matter of the direction of council as to whether you want to try to respond to that ask in the positive or in the negative, or if there's some other option that through this discussion and learning process the council would want to offer. So that's what we're asking.
Okay, well, I will attempt to.
Can I ask a quick question, Chris?
Do anything you want.
How, so Greg, you said that the city manager has to authorize an expenditure. Explain to me why this is an expenditure. I thought that this was just authorizing them to use a different funding mechanism than what had been anticipated. And Allison said something that sort of caught my attention. And it is that had they anticipated this problem, the same kind of thing was set up and built into Z Block. It's not any different than that. And that's not a city expenditure necessarily. How is, if F Block would have been set up the way Z Block was to allow for this transfer, or whatever you want to call it, if it would have been able to have been done the way Z Block payments were applied to A Block, how is that a city expenditure?
So it's, let me handle the expenditure question first and then draw a distinction on the use of the Z Block money and the F Block money. On the expenditure, the city has the right under the development agreement to approve the expenditure of bond money. So this would be an expenditure of bond money because it is being spent for the A Block debt service. Just the same that the city approves the expenditure of the F Block money from the bonds on things like the F Block improvements, the roadway improvements that are being funded, the G Block garage expenditures. Those are all things that while they're provided for in the agreement, ultimately, the city administration signs off on after reviewing budgets, making sure everything makes sense because of the TIF revenue that the city is committing to the project. In terms of comparing Z Block to F Block and the support that can be provided for A Block, they can actually work exactly the same way. But here's the distinction. It's the annual revenue from Z Block that's in excess of the Z Block debt service. And by annual revenue, I mean the TIF service payments and the NCA charges from Z Block that go to support A Block. That's something that can be done with the F Block revenue as well. The issue is timing. That F Block revenue isn't going to materialize for next year. So if there's excess F Block revenue, it can be used to help A Block in future years, once it materializes. But that doesn't solve the problem for next year.
Got it. And so I understand better what you're saying. When I hear, and I don't know if, you know, anybody that's listening hears, the city manager has the ability to authorize an expenditure. That sounds to me, if I were just sitting in my living room, like you're going to take money that's in Dublin's account and pay, just like you would be if you're going to be building a road or, you know, maintenance on service garage or anything else. It's not that type of expenditure. He has the ability to approve them spending bond proceeds on the project. It's not a city expenditure. Am I saying that correctly?
You're correct. Yes, you're correct.
So this is not the expenditure. Go ahead.
Sorry. Ultimately, the city expenditure is in the likely reduction of water in the waterfall at the end of the day.
Yeah, it's a reduction in, potential reduction in excess at the end of the day. But the expenditure I was referring to is the actual use of the bond money. So again, for example, from F Block bonds, there's roadway improvements for F Block. There's G Block parking garage improvements. There's even some B and C Block parking garage improvements. Those are all expenditures that are contemplated by the development agreement. But expenditures nonetheless, that the city approves out of those bonds, once we've had a chance to take a look at the budgets, do a double check, make sure everything is being, you know, makes sense to folks in the city administration. So it's that approval that the city ultimately has. Again, with this particular expenditure of bond money from the finance authority bonds, again, city signs off on those. This type of expenditure was not contemplated by the development agreement.
I don't think anyone in the city's business model contemplated this kind of, the kind of expenditures that COVID has solicited.
More question. Oh, I'm.
Go ahead, Jane.
Oh, just one quick question for Greg or Allison. When I look at the waterfall and the layers, it's not just, it's not just debt service, it's also capital repairs and maintenance. And so I have a concern there that if we're short on debt service, are we short on capital repairs and maintenance as well? Funding for that? Or is, and how does that? Because obviously, if there's not a lot, if there's not a huge excess for the city down at the bottom of the waterfall, what's happening midway up the waterfall? If we're already at the first level, which is, you know, problems meeting the debt, then everything past that is going to be in trouble as well, isn't it?
It could be. I think here the hope is, you know, it's, in the grand scheme of Bridge Park, you know, we've talked about $32 million of bonds for A Block, another $35 million for D Block, another $7.5 million for F Block. $340,000 isn't a huge amount of money. It's, you know, maybe it slows down the funding of an O and M reserve by a year or two. My guess is not even that, once everything is built. So it probably does not create a lot of ripples in the O and M funding. The other thing I would add is, Allison, I was just going to mention Crawford Hoang is ultimately responsible for the repair and maintenance of the garage. To the extent money is not available in the waterfall, they'll have to go out and collect revenue from its properties. I think they have what's called CAM charges, Common Area Maintenance charges, built into their leases, that if that money is needed, they can collect it that way. The other thing I'd say is, you know, these are pretty new facilities. Hopefully, we're in a time where there's not a ton of maintenance or capital repairs that's going to be necessary. That was really geared more towards 10 or 15 years from now.
Yeah, and I was going to add two things, Greg. Number one, thank you for mentioning Crawford Hoang is responsible for all of the operational costs, or Crawford Hoang managed properties here at Bridge Park are responsible for all of the costs to maintain the garages currently. So we incur significant annual costs just to operate the garage. And if you look at the waterfall, the O and M reserve, the funds hitting that section of the waterfall are actually not even anticipated until 2040 at this time. So it was a mechanism to allow us to capture some excess revenue to put in place for the later year repairs as the garage, you know, should it start to deteriorate. But we're not expecting to need those funds anytime soon.
Thanks.
I guess I want to start by saying that, you know, overall, I think this relationship has worked very well. Crawford Hoang has done a phenomenal job, amazing job with Bridge Park. But on principle, I have a real problem with this ask. And I know that there are legal constraints to what you can and cannot do. But Allison, one of the things that you said is that you can't really loan yourself money because you have no collateral. When I was in college, I got something called a signature loan. And that's really all a credit card is, is a signature loan, where a bank is loaning you money based on your credit or how they feel you have an ability to pay. So certainly, I would think that Crawford Hoang has enough confidence in this project and the success and outcome of this project to loan yourself money. You know, the collateral is the work that you do for that development. The other comment you made is that there's no mechanism for you to be repaid. And I would say that if that is true, if it's true that you can't get $195,000 that you loaned yourself back, think of that as an investment in the success of Crawford Hoang, Bridge Park, and the city of Dublin. So I would argue if you folks are really good stewards of what you're doing, you would, one way or another, figure out a way to make this work. I also understand that had this provision been worked into the original agreement, we'd never be having this conversation. So, you know, certainly, had the ability to do what you're asking us to do was written into that contract, we wouldn't be talking about it right now. You would have just done it. But on principle, I just feel that as a for-profit business that is, has been, you know, reaping the rewards of a very strong central Ohio economy and a Dublin economy. And the city, on the other hand, looking 20 years out, if you look at Northland Mall, if you look at Taro Mall, you look at a lot of real estate around the city of Columbus, after 20 years, it's pretty much lived its life, its useful life. So I wouldn't put a lot of stake in what the value of that property is going to be down the line. But lowering the value of that property by $340,000, which is what, you know, that's our carrot in the end, I have a problem with that.
Sure. Well, I think I'm going to attempt, and I am very sorry to put you all in a difficult position, but Dana needs some direction here. And so we're going to have to give it to him.
Chris, is it?
So I guess the question at hand.
Do you mind if I respond to Andy's comments real quick prior to moving for a decision?
Sure, go ahead.
I know it's Andy. So Andy, first, thank you for your appreciation of our investment in Bridge Park. And we certainly have appreciated the partnership with Dublin over the last couple of years. I understand your concerns. There is not a current mechanism for Crawford Hoang to be repaid right now. So I understand you're saying it's just $200,000. But that's not really the principle. We've come up with a solution at a low interest rate to prevent this charge from being passed through to the owners of Bridge Park Real Estate, which in many cases are residents and tenants of Bridge Park. And so we feel like we've come to council with a solution to bridge this gap. And I'd also just point out that over the years, Crawford Hoang has funded plenty of overages at Bridge Park that we've not come before council for. We felt like this was a reasonable ask, and that's why we're here today, so.
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm going to make a comment here. So while I understand that you feel that this is a reasonable ask, I want you to understand the pressures that the city is up against that may or may not have anything to do with Bridge Park. You know, this is an incredibly risky time for the city. At this moment in time, we stand to take a hit to our income tax of significant proportions, depending on how this whole 20-day rule works out. And frankly, I'm not going to come to you and say, you know, we couldn't have anticipated this hit to our income tax. We're good partners. I'd really like you to fund this gap, right? So while I hear what you're saying, that you feel that it's a reasonable ask, from my perspective, as a fiscal steward of this city and the people who live in it, it feels like a request that is a little premature. There's a lot that we still have yet that is unknown to all of us. You know, we just talked about in our CIP, wow, we're really used to planning everything out to the letter for years, right? And yet, this year, we're going to kind of hold back and sit back on a couple of things because we just don't know where some things are going to sit. We're going to make a cash finance versus debt finance decision about something that we're going to be planning for next year. But we won't make that decision, not really, until next year. So while I hear what you're saying, and I very much appreciate the partnership that Crawford Hoang has brought to us, but I hope that that is not in question here. I think that regardless of what direction that we give Dana or you, whatever happens, this is not an indictment on that partnership. What this is about is the uncertainty and the, and the, just the sheer unsureness of what's going to happen. And we've got to make sure that we're still capable and able of providing services and all of the things that our residents here pay for and desire for, and the reason that they're living in this city. So I'm just really struggling with the timing of this, more so than I am the actual mechanism itself. I get it, things don't get contemplated at the beginning of contracts sometimes, especially not things that are incredible, like a pandemic. And I fully appreciate that. But I also feel like we're being forced to make a decision that doesn't feel like a good fiscal decision right at this time and point, right? Does that make sense? Because we have so many other unknowns in a space where we've got to make decisions for our residents and not just the residents of Bridge Park, but the residents of the entire city. So that's my struggle. That is where I'm talking about principle, right? And I feel a little bit, and I don't want to speak for Andy, but I kind of feel like that's sort of where he's coming from. You know, Andy, jump in and tell me to shut up if I'm wrong. But, you know, that is where I'm finding this fundamental struggle. So while I hear your words about a reasonable request, I got to tell you, there's not a whole lot of requests right now that feel all that reasonable, given the pressures that we're under, given the constraints that we're under, and all of the unknowns that are out there.
I appreciate that. And you certainly have been going through our share of other COVID-related issues too. So I understand, you know, kind of the rapid fire incentives that you're getting hit with on a daily basis, and perhaps questions to be asked for. But I want to be clear that what we're actually asking the city to give up, as Greg mentioned, are excess revenues coming through the waterfall that the fiscal department of the city of Dublin never actually counted on coming to fruition, and that those revenues are actually not even projected to be available for several years away, 10 years or more. So the ask we're asking for is not for right now.
Change, and we may need to count on those revenues. That's what I'm trying to say. Like, we just don't know. We may have to count on those revenues. We may have to figure out ways to fund our own shortfalls and our own gaps and things. That's exactly my point.
Well, I think it's important that we answer the question that's been posed. And Allison, I want you to take the message back to all the folks at Crawford Hoang, that we count them good partners. That these are, these are very difficult times, very, very difficult times for all of us. We want it, we always want this to be a great partnership. We appreciate the work that they have put into this at this point in time. I'm going to survey council here in a minute. But this really isn't about the partnership. This is about a moment in time. And we're going to have a lot more moments in time together. That we hopefully will have lots of things to celebrate and that we will have, you know, lots of things to build on. And this is just a snapshot. And we are very appreciative of the partnership. As we are with every partnership that we have in the city, I count every business that is in the city of Dublin a partner of ours. Those partnerships look different than the partnership that we have with you largely. But, you know, you've heard the phrase, "We're all in this together," to et nauseam, right? But at the end of the day, it's true, and we are. And we want to be for one another. And being for one another doesn't always mean yes or no. Being for one another is, this is what I have to do right now. But I, but these other entities are all still quite valuable. And if there's no other message that I can send tonight, that's the one I want to send, is that we want to be good partners. This is a moment in time. We are all under very difficult circumstances right now. As Christina outlined, we're at risk of our way of life. So in light of those pressures, I'm going to survey my fellow council members here. But what I don't want the survey to tell anybody is about a good or bad partnership. Because the partnership will endure. You all will endure this. Whatever happens, we're all going to endure this, right? This is not going to be, this isn't make or break. This isn't all or done. So if you could take that message back, I think that's the message that we want to send. Regardless of the vote or how we land on this, the message we want to send is, we're in it, we're in it together for the long haul, and we all have a lot to work, a lot of work to do with our partnership with you and with our partnership of every other person, every other taxpayer in the city of Dublin that calls, they call. So with that, I'm going to attempt the virtual impossible, and I'm just going to go across my screen, and I'm going to ask you where you land. And I apologize for putting you in this position because I know that it's difficult because we all. we all want good things for one another, but sometimes we have to make difficult decisions. So with that, uh, Andy, you're in the upper left. I'm sorry, buddy.
No.
Gregory, you're center top. Your mute is on.
I'm okay with it. I think we, we all need Bridge Park to succeed. Um, I think if we had our choice of the timing of things, all of us would pick a lot of different things to be done in different time, and, uh, this is simply authorizing the use of bonds that are gonna be supported by that development. This is an absolutely extraordinary time, and, and I, I think I'm okay with it. I, I hesitated for a long time. Uh, the thing that persuaded me was that this was contemplated in Z Block and Z Block funds being used in this way. It just never occurred to anybody that this would happen, and we would need this with F Block, and given what we've gone through with COVID, um, I think I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Christina. Unfortunately, you're next.
It's all good. Um, but you couldn't have said it better about the partnership. Uh, I don't want this to reflect as an indictment on the partnership. I think they've been wonderful partners. I'm just not at a place where I can move forward with it right now. I think the timing is the issue for me more than anything else.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, you, you know, one of the positive things that maybe not everything was, um, anticipated, but what was set up was a good structure and with the NCA, et cetera, so forth. So we have a mechanism that allows for short-term corrections and so that we can manage long-term turbulences, and that was a very wise decision. Um, and, and so we do have a structure in place. So I think, given where we are at this point in time, um, I, I cannot support doing it, because you mentioned, um, that, you know, there's not a mechanism to pay Crawford Hoying back. There would equally not be a mechanism to add this back to the waterfall at some point in the future. Hopefully, from, from the, the, the change in positive, um, economics, that this will turn around, and we have a mechanism to do that with the NCA. So I'd like to see that mechanism do its job and, and get us through this for a very short period of time. So let's use the tools that we did put in place. Um, and so I would, I would say, um, no.
Right. Thank you, Jane.
Um, I've looked at this a million different ways. I've talked about it, uh, uh, to myself about, about whether or not this is the right or wrong thing to do. I personally believe that the NCA has the ability to leverage, to levy the tax on the residents and the businesses. I, as I've listened to this tonight, I believe that staff's recommendation to be able to cover one year gives relief to those businesses and residences right now, which seems like a terrible burden to them. I don't really believe that, um, we're gonna lose that much in a, in a ten-year away, maybe never gonna get waterfall excess revenue. I believe that Crawford Hoying has the ability to reduce some expenses on G Block that might make up that difference. I would not go past one year on this, and I would not expect to see the city allow transfer of, of, of expenditures from one block to another to be a common practice, because I think that's a shell game. And I don't think it's a good idea, and I wouldn't do it in my home household budget. But for this instance, um, I was leaning, uh, towards Andy and, um, and Kathy, but, but I think this one-year, um, ability to help by transferring it over, and only this one year is where I stand. So I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, uh, John?
Now, I agree that Crawford Hoying has been extraordinary partners in all these endeavors that have gone on for years and years, and they haven't really requested any help. And a matter of fact, if I look at the, uh, execution of this project, it has been done with exceptional care and, um, high quality. So, um, I have to agree with, um, Jane and also with Greg on this. Um, these people have, if you walk over there, and you go over there a lot, and we all have, but you start, what was mentioned is true. They've come out and spent a lot more money on extras and never came back. And I mean, even down to the minutia, if you look at the public, um, dining tables downtown, and anybody could have put those out, put a chain around them, but they put them down, put planters around them, all kinds of added expenses to make this thing successful for the city of Dublin. So, and they've done that throughout the entire program. So, no, I have to say, I agree with, uh, Jane on this, that I do the one-year extension and try to help them out, because in the end, I agree that, you know, in the, in the final waterfall, there may not be as much funding for us, but there could be. But this is an extraordinary time, and this has been an exceptional partner who's built an entirely new city and lifestyle for our community, which also has huge tax implications for our community, and allows the kind of workers to come into our community that our offices need for their success. So they've been a really great partner. So, no, I'm with the affirmative on this. Thank you.
Good. Well, um, I, I support this at this time for the reasons that I stated, and perhaps it can be revisited at a future time. You know, I'm interested in seeing what federal government does. And I don't want to interrupt that process. It, I, it is difficult to make a decision to help fill the gap of lost revenues for a single entity in the city. That's, is, uh, without doing it for everyone, and that's an impossible task for us. Um, so Dana, uh, by my counts, you have a four to three, no.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate the guidance. Um, I, I want to thank everyone for, you know, going so deep into learning about, uh, the agreement and understanding all the pieces and parts to it. Um, I would echo to the great partnership that we've had with them and all the difference that it's making, um, the jobs that it's saved and so forth. We all know that information. We talk about it often, and we promote that, and, uh, we'll continue to work hard with them as a partner, as we do with many others. And, uh, I appreciate the guidance. And Allison, I want to thank you for all your work and, um, responding to the many questions that you've been asked, and, uh, uh, to Bob Hoying and Brent Crawford as well, for their, um, also responsiveness, uh, to many of our questions. So I thank you all for, for this conversation.
If I just may, uh, jump in and, and echo Chris, your comments and everyone's comments about the partnership. Um, we certainly understand that this was a difficult decision. It was complex and complicated. Um, so appreciate the candid conversation we've had. I think we've all gotten to know the bonds, refreshed our memory on the bonds over the last couple of weeks. So, um, thank you, um, for considering the request, and, and we'll hopefully not be back here anytime soon with, um, any more COVID-related requests, so.
Mayor, I forgot to also, uh, recognize, you know, and say thanks to Greg and Matt for their, for their work as well, and I, I appreciate that, uh, council members took the extra time, some of you, to spend time with Greg and Matt, and to get more familiar with the agreement and the history and how all these pieces and parts come together. So just want to make sure I point that out.
Well, it certainly has been a, a valuable exercise, and, uh, and, and again, this is a point in time, and we'll have lots more point, point in times together in future, so. I'll look forward to those. Okay, um, moving on to Dublin twenty thirty-five update, uh, with Vice Mayor DeRosa. I, I am afraid because of the hour, uh, we might not have those robust of a conversation there as, as we might otherwise. You have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, i- if it's agreeable with everybody, why don't we have that discussion next meeting? Does that make sense?
Okay.
Great. And I would say is, read the memo between now and then, and then we'll even have a shorter discussion. How's that? So thanks.
I, I like short discussions. Um, great, Anne, if you would please get that on the next agenda. Uh, we also then have, uh, speaking of agendas, we have our, um, calendar for twenty twenty-one. It's been before us. I'm looking for the copy that I. Uh, were there comments regarding the calendar? I only had one, uh, option two that I would like to perhaps exercise. We are scheduled for a meeting on Monday, November the twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. That is the week of Thanksgiving, and many folks travel and, uh, are out, because many are off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So I, um, in, in, in the spirit of having resident input and opportunity, I'd like to see exercise option two, which you have outlined here on the calendar for November fifteenth. That was the only change that, that spoke to me. Does anyone else have any reason to talk through those other dates?
No, but I agree with your option two on November.
And just to clarify, um, just changing November fifteenth, keeping the, um, November eighth date, sorry. Okay.
Yes, uh, maintain eight, we'll meet two weeks in a row in November.
Right.
And is it a good idea to have a regular meeting on August ninth, the day after the Irish Festival, which we hope will have? Uh, not much time to prepare for a meeting if you're spending your time we're, uh, enjoying and working the Irish Festival.
That's a good call, Gina. I think and correct me if I'm wrong, I think each year we do not do a council meeting immediately following the Irish Festival.
We have generally tried to do that, right? That's really why I laid out the options.
Maybe option two would be good there, too. I think so.
Yeah. Would you want to go the sixteenth and the thirtieth then?
Yeah, I would.
Or do you want to keep sixteenth and then twenty-third?
I think the sixteenth and the thirtieth makes sense, just given where, um, September falls next year.
Right? That would still give us a, a week before our September thirteenth, a week off before the September thirteenth. Okay, so we'll take August sixteenth, August thirtieth, and November fifteenth options.
Great. Okay.
Thanks for putting that together, Anne. Sure do appreciate you coordinating with their, all the schools' calendars and everything. I know that's a lot of work. Appreciate that. I guess, uh, oh, well, I will move to adopt with the modifications, the twenty twenty-one council regular meeting schedule. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christine. Anne, would you please call roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor DeRosa?
Yeah.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that'll bring us to staff comments, and we have a policy review update from Homer. There, yes?
Yeah, hello. Dana, did you have some comments you wanted to start out with, or?
Yeah, actually, I've got a couple of comments I'd like to, to jump in with. First of all, um, and I apologize, there's one item I wanted to to put in here, and that's, I would like, we didn't do a proclamation on this, but I wanted to remind uh, all of our residents out there that it is National Preparedness Month. As if everyone hasn't been dealing with national preparedness with COVID, um, you certainly are experts at it now with that, um, but really what this is about, it's a federal emergency management program, as well as, uh, local, uh, state and local emergency management agencies to lift up uh, your preparedness and encourage everyone to be prepared for emergencies and unanticipated, uh, emergencies and even disasters. You know, we think about coronavirus because it's right here in front of us, but things like floods, and just think about the tornadoes we had last week uh, nearby, uh, that affected some of our peer communities on Labor Day, extreme heat, we're coming into snow season, hazardous materials in the fires out west are those kinds of emergencies that can face our residents. So the point of, of the matter is disasters can happen at any time and any place, uh, without announcement, so therefore your personal preparedness is important. So please spend some time putting your personal preparedness plan together, and, um, and be aware of those kinds of things that you can do to take better care or prepare for yourself and your loved ones. We have information out there on our website, and also would encourage you to go out to the Federal Emergency Management Agency website and/or the county, Franklin County, Delaware, or Union County emergency management websites as well. Uh, you might recall that, uh, Resolution thirty-seven twenty, which was a resolution the council passed uh, back in, uh, June timeframe, it was a resolution combating injustice and equity intolerance, negative stereotyping and discrimination based on race, religion, ethnicity, or belief. Uh, section, uh, five of that, uh, resolution directed, uh, me to undertake a review of the city's, uh, relevant organizational and departmental policies, practices, and training to ensure that the city does foster diversity, equity, inclusion in all aspects of our operations and administration. Uh, we were required to report back to you by today as to our findings on that. Uh, these findings are not, uh, complete. Uh, there's work, there's always work to be done, and always improvements to be made. I want to thank Assistant City Manager Homer Rogers and others of our staff who uh, jumped into that self-assessment, I'll call it. He put a pretty extensive memo in your packet about that. Um, I know that the time is, uh, long here this evening. I don't know, Homer, if there's a couple uh, items you just want to highlight very quickly about that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I had a rather extensive speech to give tonight, but I'll, I'll just shorten it up. Um, the memo was pretty extensive. There's a lot of things, you know, in there, uh, that includes a demographic analysis um, in the, in the beginning section of it. Uh, there's a listing or an accounting of all the things that we do have going on in terms of things that are currently in code, current policies, uh, things of that nature, and then it, you know, it finalizes, uh, the last half of the, the memo with our opportunities for improvement. Um, if you would want me to go through a listing of those things, I certainly can, um, but if you've read the memo, um, and as Dana did say, uh, we do have another stage of this, an external assessment from Steve Francis with, um, Franchise DNI Solutions, um, on Friday of this week, um, it's gonna take us through a diversity and inclusion appraisal, and there will be a follow-on, um, assessment or, or report from that as well. So combined with what we have in the memo right now, plus what we get out of that, you know, appraisal, we'll have a more complete picture of the city at that point in time.
I would also add that I shared this report with the Community Task Force, which had its first meeting last week. And so for their awareness going forward, and I'm sure the chief will, this week, has a meeting with his chief's advisory committee, and will probably share that information as well. So it was a great reflection on, um, uh, and, and inward reflection on the things that we have been doing and the things that we need to do, and like Homer said, we'll probably be exploring more of those things that we need to be doing as well. And we'll look forward to the input of the Community Task Force, as well as the Chief Advisory Committee as we go through this process. Uh, the next item we have is a, a review of the stone, stone walls. I'm gonna hand this over to Jenny Roush, I believe, is going to take this up. This uh, was taken at, uh, council's request to Architectural Review Board, and this has to do with the South High Street improvements, and I wanted, uh, Jenny to share back with you those, uh, results of that meeting, just so we could get some further direction from council. Thanks, Jenny.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Um, so as Dana said, I'm just gonna give you a quick overview. We provided a detailed memo to council about their ARB's comments um, related to those proposed stone walls. So, um, as you recall, council at your July meeting asked for ARB to provide some informal feedback and thoughts about, about the proposal. So they had a really robust discussion about this. Um, supportive, obviously, on the, of the focus and attention being paid to the streetscape on, on South High Street with the tree plantings, obviously, understanding the site constraints that are down there, particularly on the west side with the grade changes, um, and how to accommodate that. Their concerns, um, and comments were really related to the, um, installation of a stone wall where it would not have been historically, um, located. So there was a lot of concern by the, by the board members about that being, um, put in that location, particularly on the west side. Um, again, as that was not historically there. Um, in addition, they had concerns about the, what the proposed wall and the potential dominance along the streetscape there, and that altering the character of the historic district. So a lot of concerns, uh, on their part about that, as well as safety, in that the provision of that more, uh, level, I guess, leveling out of the grade there to provide some increased pedestrian facilities potentially creates a problem where you may not know that it would drop off then down to the street level. So there was a lot of concerns about how the safety would be handled within that area. Um, so again, overall, they just wanted to express their, um, support for, you know, improvements down there, but just some details and concerns about how that would be executed. So the memo recommends, or staff is recommending, um, some directions. the memo recommends or staff is recommending some direction, further direction from council on how to proceed with that. And Matt Erman is here as well. You know, if you have any specific questions about the proposal and how to proceed.
Great. Thanks, Jenny. Um, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about this and in theory and walked the area and things. I nosed around today to try to find the materials that were presented to the ARB and I didn't see, I don't know exactly what was presented to them because I don't feel like we saw a final drawing of of all of the stone wall locations and heights and things like that. So I think maybe that's something that we need to have access to. What that presentation was. I don't know if other council members feel the same way, but I don't recall seeing a finalized drawing of of exactly anything in detail. And Andy is looking like, yes, I'm going to say, so please unmute yourself and tell me.
I would just say that looking at the the renderings that I saw. When I read the minutes from the ARB meeting, you know, it's essentially creating a false sense of history. To my knowledge, there's never been a stone wall there and the stone walls are an iconic Dublin feature, but they don't have to be everywhere and maybe they don't need to be in the historic district in that area. I guess my practical question would be from a retaining wall standpoint, I think there's areas where you need a retaining wall. If it's not a dry stacked stone look, then what is it? And and I don't know, you know, that's for the engineers and planners to figure out, but it would seem to me that there are going to be some hazards involved with a retaining wall, no matter what it looks like. And if you have to build a retaining wall, even though a dry stacked wall presents a false sense of history, it's probably the best alternative of the retaining wall types.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, there are safety issues there regardless. I've seen people, you know, trying on a slippery wet, trying to get up those kind of mud inclines and slip and fall. I've seen that happen in the historic district as well. So I guess I don't know if we're prepared to solve this tonight. And correct me if I'm wrong, but did the rest of you see, I read through the ARB meeting minutes as well today, but I don't know that we saw all of the renderings as they were presented to ARB prior to them being presented to ARB. Did we, Jenny? And I missed it?
I'd have to defer to Matt on whether that was presented as part of council's review. They were shown a photoshopped rendering at ARB of what this could potentially look like.
Share my screen and hopefully that will help. So can you see the screen, the rendering of the stacked stone wall?
Yep.
Okay, so this was the rendering that we showed to both city council and ARB as to the the type of design that was going to be the retaining wall. And you'll recall that there were also going to be some stairs that were going to be inputted into this wall to provide easier access up to that sidewalk.
I thought you needed retaining wall to help give you more dirt volume for the trees. It looks like the trees. How is that doing that?
Well, it brings the tree down to the street level. You'll recall there are some suspended pavement structures underneath of the pavement. So that in order to get the roots to go under the pavement and provide that volume of soil, you need to take the tree ball down to that level. So the treats, so the roots can, the laterals can can reach under the roadway.
And you can't do that without the retaining wall?
Well, you'll have to have some kind of a retention there from the, between the sidewalk and the street just because of the grade change.
You could have like a small retaining wall that wraps around the tree. Could you do that?
Could have that. In fact, there was, there was a, an attempt to take a look at that as well. Now, this rendering is certainly not exact, but this is the type of look that that would give you.
Okay.
I guess, you know, as a former ARB member and trying to get inside their heads. To me, if you take out that stone and you just leave grass that's at kind of a, you know, an awkward angle. The Village of Dublin, 20, 30, 40 years ago, probably would have had just that, you know, it's just very simple. And that's probably what they're recognizing that, you know, we're, we're creating something that is more perfect and and there are, you know, reasons to do that. But historically, it's not necessarily accurate with that, with what would have been there 40, 50, 60 years ago.
Well, I think Andy probably in the Village of Dublin, if we were going for accuracy, there wouldn't be street trees. There just wouldn't be. It would have been a, you know, it would have started with, you know, wagons or whatever coming up and down the river. And, you know, then it would have been a few fishing shanties and so on and so forth. So I mean, if we want to be true, then we won't, we likely wouldn't have trees. Certainly not trees that matched, that created a tree scape.
So I'd like to jump in on this because, you know, I live down there and I walk these streets all the time and and what I worry about is that a long wall, and I stood there and I visualized what it would look like. It changes. It changes. It's the strongest element you'll see. There is a softness, which is why we miss the trees so badly. There's a softness and there's a ballet of the way that sidewalk works when you walk down it. The way the movement, you notice the small things. You notice the little carriage stone. You notice peeking, you know, the way the front doors peek out, even though this looks pretty, when you're getting out of the car, you're going to hit that wall every time. Every kid in the world is going to run that wall and they're going to fall down off that wall. It just doesn't, it doesn't add to the softness of the district. It, there is a strength to it that I think will just look unnatural. You know, I know that there must be other creative ways to secure those trees so that they stay healthy. I'm just not sure we've landed on it yet. I respect.
I think, I think Jane, that there needs to be some breaks in this wall, but now when you open your corridor in the district, it goes into the mud on the slope of the.
Well, like I said, I think there are probably some other options. I just don't think a long wall like that, even if it's broken up where the, where the sidewalks enter the front door of a residence. I'm not sure that, I still think it's too much wall. I also respect and think it's important that we respect the opinion of our Architectural Review Board. They they have, you know, spent a lot of time looking at this. And I do think that it would be unfair to override their opinion and just say, let's build the wall anyway. So I certainly don't think we need to do that. I also believe that the city in many ways impacts the historic district more so than the residents and businesses do because we we bring in so many of these strong elements and we do change the character, which is another reason I think the Architectural Review Board is looking at it very holistically. So I would like to see some other options other than a stone wall like this.
You know, I also believe that, you know, it's a too strong of a design element. Also, it doesn't really reflect the kind of walls that was built that are part of Dublin. If you think about the Irish stone walls and how you really lay them and they're laid horizontally like this, but then the tops are capped. And of course, that would impede people sitting out there for parades. But still, it isn't reflective of really what this town probably looked like. And I agree with Andy on that. And, you know, yeah, it's a muddy sloped hill, but you know, given the proper care. I think it's, it fits more or less the architectural, historical aspects of the town. So I agree with you, Jane and Andy on this. Thank you.
Other than, I don't, I wouldn't want to see a stone wall that's contiguous like that. I, I think I think Matt was probably just trying to give us something. I don't recall seeing this very image and that's probably, I missed something. But I would, you know, maybe, maybe Matt, we revisit it and we come up with something. I would imagine where the stairs come down out of this residence here, those would go all the way to the street in execution. Or something like that. So you know, this is probably the longest, this is probably the this and in front of the Dublin Village Center, probably the two most difficult grades to work out in this certainly on the west side of High Street, I think. And we probably do need to come up with something more creative. Than what's, you know, what's there now. I don't know what other people think. We want to revisit this at another time. And Matt, maybe you can provide a little more context. Is this the only place this wall is, you know, how would we break it up if we were going to break it up? You know, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I think based on comments from ARB and certainly here this evening, we can take another look at this. It will delay the project, but it's better to do it right. And, you know, the end product is really what we're after. So we can take this back and brainstorm some new ideas and creative ideas. I think one thing I would recommend though, is maybe we start with ARB and get their feedback first. With some sort of direction, if that's so desirable of council.
Yeah, I read through those meeting minutes. It was clear they didn't like this, but I didn't see in those meeting minutes what, what they preferred. So that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think in the end, I think if we are going to achieve the soil volume that we're looking for, we need to bring those trees down to that level somehow. So.
And they probably need to understand that if we want a tree canopy and maybe they come back and say, we don't want, we don't want a tree canopy. But, you know, we owe them that, that information. Any other comments from council? That's it? Okay, thanks, Matt. We'll try to revisit. When you have opportunity to complete that. Okay, takes us to council committee reports, planning and zoning, Jane?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Admin Kathy?
Only one quick thing. I sent you all an email as we're preparing for our mid-year touch base reviews for our staff. There's some materials. If you would read those and respond, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Community Development Committee, John? Unmute, please.
Excuse me. We do have a meeting Wednesday and I'll see you all there. Hopefully it won't be too lengthy. Thank you.
Good. Finance Committee, Christina?
Nothing this time.
Public Services, Jane?
No, just that we're planning on meeting towards the middle to end of October.
Thank you, Coda Kathy?
Nothing. Thank you.
Morpsy, I don't have anything at this time. Ogan Union Champagne, Andy?
Nothing to report.
33 Corridor, Kathy Jane?
No, thanks.
Arts Council, John?
I just want to comment on the collaboration between the Dublin Arts Council and the Dublin Convention Visitors Bureau to create the Six Foot Gallery Public Art and Public Health Initiative in downtown Dublin. Each artist removed at least one decal last week. They'll be saving them for our community exhibition of artwork created during the pandemic, which will take place in the Dublin Arts Council Gallery, hopefully in the spring of 2021. The effort netted more than 8,000, 850,000 traditional unpaid media impressions and more than 20,000 in organic unpaid social media reach. So it was, it was a very interesting thing. I think many of us had the opportunity to see those on the floor of actually the historic district and then on the Dublin side the new Dublin side. It was very, I thought it was very well done, very interesting. So congratulations to both of those groups for pulling that off.
Thank you. Greg, Board of Education?
Nothing to report.
My kids had their second first day of school today. Take two. We just called it take two around here. Washington Township, Jane?
No, nothing.
Nothing. Bridges, Jane?
They're still doing great work. Every, every month, every year, every day.
Veterans Committee, John?
You'll probably be hearing about the Purple Heart activity coming up. I won't tell you much about it. You'll get some information on it and the Purple Heart Memorial Group. So that'll be coming up in your paperwork here shortly.
Okay, Friendship Committee, Christina, Andy?
No.
And Complete Count, Christina?
83.1. That's the number we're at. We have to the end of this month. Let's get out there and take the census.
Are they starting door to door? Are they going to do some of that?
Probably not in Dublin. They, they certainly are working the areas that are the lowest reporting areas.
Yeah, there were some that were barely in the double digits. So.
That's right. Those are the ones they're focused on.
That's good. Okay. Anything else for council roundtable? Anybody got anything for the good order? I won't call it all. You raise your hand if you got something. With that, my friends, it has been a pleasure and we will stand adjourned. Have a great evening.